Yeah. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Board Committee of a whole meeting to order. The time is now 6:33. And we'd like to also give a big welcome to our newly appointed members, Mr. or Pastor Gilbert, as I finally call him, and Mr. Dale Moron for joining us. Their first official board meeting is tonight. So congratulations and welcome. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the board record. Vice President Green is absent. Secretary Ellis McNeil.
Present.
Treasurer McIntyre. Assistant Secretary Treasurer Walker.
Present.
Board Trustee Dale Moron.
Present.
Board Trustee Gilbert.
Present.
And myself is present. Board members absent is Vice President Green. The board will now hear comments from the public. We ask that you state the reason for addressing the board and that you limit your remarks to three minutes on the matters within the jurisdiction of the board and not address individuals by name. The presiding officers of the board show have the right to limit the number of persons who may address the board on the same subject. Members of the public are reminded that the board by its bylaws 1370 is not under obligation to answer questions, make comments, or statements to respond to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to the Superintendent for Investigation, Study, or Recommendation. Audience members are reminded to state their names and addresses and if appropriate, the group they represent. Employees of the board, representatives of employee organizations and/or unions, and students should exhaust administrative procedures before addressing the board on matters for which administrative review is provided. You are solely responsible for the content of your public statement. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Please come forward. Okay, is Ms. Lee out there? No, she's not.
Yes, she is.
Okay. Board members joining us this evening is Attorney Lee to give us an update regarding the investigation she is conducting for the board. Ms. Lee, would you like to, Ms. Lee, would you like to come up here?
Oh, yes, that's fine.
Madam President.
Yes, Pastor Gilbert.
Is it possible that some light could be shown on our speaker? Something so we cannot be able to really see her? Because I, I like to see people's eyes when they're talking. Thank you.
Should we, should we, should we move the desk up? That's the only way you probably don't get more light. Like you guys were when you interviewed.
If there's no objections.
I love it.
That was a lot, it took a lot of men to get that job.
Very efficient, too.
Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening, Ms. Lee, Attorney Lee.
Good evening, Board President. I'm going to speak louder.
Thanks.
Am I far enough away from y'all to have this long?
Attorney Lee.
Can you hear me now? Okay, good. Loud and clear. Perfect. Okay, so good evening, Board members and everyone in the audience. I am, I just want to be very clear that the investigation into the legal fees from the Williams firm is still ongoing. This is an update, right? And so we will discuss where we are in the investigation and concerns that have come up during the investigation. And then whatever items you may need to vote on as a result of that will come after if you so choose so. So since we have two new board members, I'm just going to give a little bit of background so you understand what's going on. So on July 21st, 2021, the Flint Community School Board voted to investigate the legal fees submitted by managing attorney Kendall Williams of the Williams Firm PC, which was the legal counsel in the Flint Community School District prior to myself. Several board members asked questions regarding the legal fees in the district and were concerned when they learned the Williams Firm was billing at least $750,000 annually in the district. Legal fees are paid through the general fund and may not be paid with grant awards. So myself, acting on the board's request for an investigation, my team reviewed six months of the legal invoices submitted by the Williams Firm. The review revealed, in my team's opinion, that the Williams Firm allegedly engaged in excessive staffing of assignments, completed unnecessary work, engaged in conflict of interest, double billed for time other attorneys or professionals have performed on matters, and likely breached fiduciary duties. So under Michigan law, fiduciary duties are a relationship in which one other person is under a duty to act for the benefit of the other. So an example, myself being your board attorney, I'm required to put the Flint Community School District before anything that could personally relate to myself or benefit myself. As early as 2010, former Superintendent Linda Thompson noticed in the district that the Williams Firm was billing a million dollars or close to that number annually. Thompson sought to combat this large expenditure in legal fees by hiring an in-house counsel. This person's name was Karen Pugh, Attorney Karen Pugh. To no avail, Thompson continued to receive large legal bills in the district even with the help of in-house counsel. By Superintendent Thompson's assertion, assertions, the Williams Firm repeatedly overbilled. Attorney Pugh and Superintendent Thompson began to correct the Williams Firm's invoices, sometimes slashing a half or a majority of the bill because the Williams Firm had, had billed for work that they had not been asked to do, billed for multiple attorney, billed for multiple attorneys on a matter that that did not need as many attorneys, or billed for the work the in-house attorney completed. After Superintendent Thompson began a review of the legal bills to reduce the legal bills, Attorney Williams allegedly abused his influence over the board as an attorney to attempt to rid the district of anyone who would, who disagreed with fees. So I've spoken to multiple former superintendents, board members, and also former administrators who agree with this assertion that any statements made against the Williams Firm while they were legal counsel for the district, they would retaliate against that person and they would either eventually end up leaving the district or having some type of issue in the district. Based on what my team has uncovered, we wish to have a forensic investigator look at the emails of those involved to see who knew what and when. After this has taken place, the board may use the report, if necessary, to request action, a refund of excess fees, possible lawsuits, possible criminal investigations. There are also some things that I think that has come across in the investigation outside of just the six-month period that we looked at. So during Superintendent Lopez's tenure here, he also gave a statement and for months at a time, he did not pay the legal fees of the Williams Firms due to the fact that he disagreed with the bills. During the time that he was there, those bills went unpaid, and when he was removed, those bills were eventually paid. I'm not sure if the board has taken action regarding that. That's still something that I'm looking into regarding whether or not the board voted to pay those disputed bills, whether the board knew that there were disputed bills. In the course of the statements that I've taken from individuals who worked for the Flint Community School District or were board members or former superintendents, there were many, many allegations regarding there may have been an improper relationship between legal counsel, the Williams Firm, specifically Attorney Kendall Williams, and certain board members. And so with the help of a forensic investigator, we can look into these allegations. My findings are not legal findings. I am a attorney and I am an investigator. However, you need a court of law or an actual body right to have legal findings. So I just want to make that clear. These are the opinion of my team and the review that we have done. So if I can turn your attention to the packet that I have given you. There's a letter from my firm, and just for the benefit of those in the audience, I will read that out loud. So, "Dear Flint Community Board Members, the following information in the tables below is representative of six months of legal services provided by the Williams Firm PC from December 2020 through May 2021. Throughout the investigation, we found several indicators that support allegations that the Flint Community School District were overcharged for legal services. The information below indicates that the Williams Firm's PC allegedly participated in repetitive billing, meaning more than one attorney billing for the same work, several charges from attorneys reviewing each other's work, charges for attorneys reviewing correspondence from another attorney to clients, charges for attorneys reviewing emails from each other, unnecessary legal conferences where each attorney was paid to have discussions with each other or with one another. The services that are highlighted in blue are services that we found to be repetitively billed. The services that are highlighted in yellow are services that reflect more than one person doing the same work or working on the same assignments. These examples do not provide the full magnitude of the services that were wrongfully billed. Based on the statements provided by former superintendents, administrators, and board members, it is my recommendation that the board vote to authorize the use of a forensic auditor from Plant Moran, who's our, her current auditor, to look into these allegations further." And the reason that I make this recommendation is due to the fact that our auditors already have to look at it because they are auditing our books from this past month. So if they use a forensic investigator, there's a little overlap of that, and I believe it would result in someone not having to look completely at all of our files since they already have to. And so I have, just in the interest of being able to share with the board, asked the auditors for some sort of scope of work or price so we would know what that would look like. So if you take a look, if you flip the page and take a look at the, the legal fees, these are just captions from what was billed, so it's not the actual full bill. It's just captions of what was billed, and then you'll see highlighted where there, there's another attorney either billing for the work or billing for a, a repetitive task, right? And so you'll see that located throughout this particular document. And I apologize, this is a lighter blue on my computer. It looks a little difficult to read. And then you'll see the highlights in yellow as well where someone else will be performing the actual work. So for example, if you look at 1-5, right, you'll see that there are three attorneys that are billing essentially for the same thing. And this is just for a small subset of the bills. So with that, in order to be mindful of your time, I just want to make sure that you understand that this is not the complete investigation. When you ask, when you have allegations, you want to look and see if there's any type of truth to them, and then you can do a deeper dive, right? So from what I've found, I do believe that there's a need to go further and look back to, so the malpractice law says that we have six years to go back. So if this was 2021, I believe our timeframe would be, y'all help me, lawyers can't do math. Right, so we would go back to that timeframe. And I mean, obviously, you don't want to put yourself in a position to where, you know, you're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to find five dollars, right? But in this particular case, if you look at the end and you look at just the brief summary, so I want to be clear that in this table, I did not, I gave credit for work that was performed by one attorney, not the three attorneys. But that doesn't mean that the work that was performed by that particular attorney was even necessary. Does that make sense? Yes. Okay, so that doesn't mean that, you know, the total that I came up with at the end is really the total that were overbilled. That's just the total of repetitive work. It's not even saying that the work that was actually performed or billed by one, two, or three people is even necessary. And so with that, I'll take questions.
Ms. McNeil.
I'm sorry. Madam President to Attorney Lee, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I have a question. Number one, if we could just, I don't know, I hate to see you reprint this, is there a way you can just send us a copy with the dark blue on it?
Uh huh.
I wanted to say I do appreciate what you just have done because we have been questioning this for a very long time, and we've finally gotten to the bottom of it. I'm in agreement with your request, so I can just pass it on to the next person, but we really appreciate starting this process.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre.
Oh, my God, thank you. I mean, everyone knows where I stand with this because I've been wallowing in these invoices for quite some time, trying to make head or tail of them, not being a legal attorney myself, and not being able to, you know, really take into anyone into confidence, given that these were confidential documents. So I really appreciate, and I, and I want to stress this, your honesty and your integrity for having the moral fortitude to come forward and do what, in my opinion, previous attorneys and legal counsel and in the greater Flint area have been unwilling, unable to do. There's been, in my opinion, a conspiracy of silence. I think the more we do an investigation, the more we're going to find people who kind of either knew or turned a blind eye to this. And again, this is, this is all allegedly my opinion as an individual. So I fully support this. I'm really glad to have you on our team.
Thank you.
It's about time. Like you said, it goes back to 2010. If, is, was he contracted before 2010? Or was it?
To what, to my knowledge, it was since the 1990s.
So, I, you're saying that there's like a statute of limitations for six years?
Right. And, and basically, so this is, this is going to be a question that's answered for us by the Attorney Grievance Commission because when you pay a legal bill, if it, even if you pay it and it's already paid, if a lawyer has overcharged you or charged you an obscene fee or something's wrong, by the attorney grievance standards, they have to fix it. So it would be up to the Grievance Commission to determine really, you know, what that amount of money is or, you know, what the, if any, punishment would be if the allegations were found to be true.
So that's, so that's one thing that we can do.
Right.
Is go with the Attorney Review Commission, and the Attorney Review Commission will go back six years.
So, so that's, that's for a legal malpractice lawsuit, right? So any malpractice by an attorney, the statute of limitation is six years. That's not necessarily saying that the Attorney Grievance Commission wouldn't be able to look further than that, right?
So if we, if we would like that, I, I personally, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, and we'll have to have this discussion, I would like to see it go as far back as it goes back because right is right and wrong is wrong, and to do this to a district like Flint, Flint is unconscionable. I'm, I'm, I mean, the only reason why I'm not crying and screaming right now is because I, I knew this was coming. I mean, I've seen the, I mean, I've seen these documents, and so.
And just to give you some context, typical, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Typical legal bill in a school district, I mean, even fighting some, I mean, you're not, a million dollars is extreme. I mean, it's, it means that you're just getting sued pretty much every day, in my opinion. I mean, this is someone who's working more than full-time, right? You're in comparison to, in comparison to just my experience working in, you know, working with school districts and just seeing things maybe about, maybe if you have an ongoing tenure issue, you know, those things can get costly and things like that. But what I want to bring to your attention is that you had the board council's bills. These are not inclusive of other law firms. You already had a $600,000 pot that was separate from that. And so one of the major concerns that I saw is that particularly there were lots of billing, there was lots of billing going on where there would be other firms, specifically one that I can name right now would be a lawsuit matter that we had, and then board counsel is specifically talking to this person or that we've decided is an expert in this particular matter. And so if I hire an expert, I'm going to let that expert do their job. I'm not going to piggyback the expert unless it's absolutely necessary for us to share some type of work. And so I'll give you an example where that would be proper. So here, Plant Moran, they're an auditor, so they're able to look and see maybe the time in which bills, you know, they can add up the hours of time that were like double billed, they can look at emails, they can image a computer and do a deeper dive.
Ms. Lee, can you remove your mask?
Oh, is it?
You're extremely muffled.
Okay, sorry about that. Do you want me to say what I was saying before?
I mean, go ahead.
Okay. So in this particular case, I would be able to look at the bill and provide the legal expertise to see, okay, this is something that maybe at max, two attorneys could have worked on. But billing in a school district where, let's say you have negotiations, so you have a HR director, you have the superintendent, maybe you might need legal counsel to give you some advice on certain things, but by no means do you have to have a lawyer in negotiations. Now, if you have some type of, it helps, right, to have legal counsel, and we can't count that out. But is it necessary to have two or three lawyers present, right? Is it necessary to bill for food? Is it necessary to bill for things that just aren't necessary, especially when you're running a deficit and the money comes out of the general fund? And so that goes back to the fiduciary duties, making sure that when I'm thinking about the Flint Community Schools, that it is in your best interest and not in my best interest as legal counsel or to get paid or things like that. Go ahead.
No, no, you can, you can. If I can just, just follow through with what I'm thinking. So is the Attorney Review Commission, is that, is that, would that be following up with ethics violations? Is that, or is that something separate?
So, no, they, they deal with that, too. So the Attorney Review Commission can look at all, what the claims you bring forward about an attorney not fulfilling their duties underneath, of being licensed under the state bar. So if there is any type of issue, whether it's legal fee billing, whether it's conflict of interest, improper relationships, any issue you have with an attorney, you can bring before this board. And the good thing about the commission is they're not attorneys. So they have no interest to protect anyone who is not doing what they're supposed to do.
And so we've got ethics violations, and then we've got criminal and civil charges as well, or is?
Allegedly, yes.
I mean, no, allegedly, but those are, I'm talking about avenues that we could pursue.
Yes, yes, all avenues you can pursue. And even then, I, I have to be frank with you all, and so this is on my next page after questions, but I'll go there now since you're asking. You're, you're able to write a letter to the Williams Firm and say, hey, we think you owe, you owe us X, Y, and Z. It could be handled that way, right? You could reach out to the Attorney Grievance Commission. You can file a lawsuit. You can keep investigating and see what happens. I mean, there are so many different avenues. My recommendation at this step is to find out what we don't know, right? And so the reason why I keep saying allegedly is there, there may be emails that give context to some of the double billing. While I think that's likely, we have to give people the benefit of the doubt in these type of situations. And my review and my, my team's review was given in the light best to the Williams Firm, right, to, and even then, you know, we came up with quite a few things that just didn't sit right with us.
And Plant Moran, in your opinion, is the one to do this work, or should we do an RFP and look maybe outside of the state?
So I think that the reason why they would be the people to do the work is because, based on what we've found, we already see inconsistencies, right? And so that, they're going to give us the opportunity to capture and image things such as computers, conversations. So for example, if, let's say there is a, a, a bill, here, okay, I'll use this as an example. So here, there's a bill for preparing a memo and sending correspondence. Now, from, at this one, I didn't mark this as not necessary or being double billed. But if we look at that email, we'll be able to get more context around what really happened and whether or not it was a need for two or three attorneys to do that work. Does that make sense? Yeah. And so we want to do that because what we don't want to do is move forward in a court of law with allegations like this or go to the Attorney Grievance Commission without doing our due diligence. And so, which is why I started with, this is an update, and this is where we are, and the reason why we're doing it in an open meeting is because this is a new board and we want to be completely transparent about what's going on, right? So while we're not having these issues now, right, we're not having bills that we, we don't believe match what is being done in the district, we have to make sure that because we weren't here at the time, that we take that extra step.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, I've got a ton of questions and things.
No, and I'm sorry, I didn't really answer your question. You asked, should we use Plant Moran? And the reason why I say we should is because, one, in my, well, let me take that back. Plant Moran, time is of the essence. They actually have to do audit and they have to look at these six months of bills. So I've done a lot of it for them, right? And so I'm going to give this to them, so they shouldn't bill for this. But there is more that they have to look into, to do their due diligence under kind of fraud terminologies and things like that that they have to do for audits. They already have to do it. The thing is, what they don't have to do is do a deep dive, which is looking at computers, looking at emails, seeing if anything is getting biased. And so the one other thing I want to comment on is that out of the statements that I have received so far from people who I've asked, that have been kind of implicated, I guess, in some way, shape, or form, and by implication, I mean, they either reported that the fees were too much and they felt like no one did something about it, or they were a former superintendent and said, you know, this is the reason why I was let go. There are so many different reasons and allegations that are coming out of this. Um, there are so many different reasons and allegations that are coming out of this particular investigation. So it's imperative that we do our due diligence in that part. And then the other piece of that is, the statements that were made, there were also additional allegations that were made, and so, those allegations were that, um, some board members were colluding in order to continue this fee cycle billing going, right? That's something that we're not gonna know unless we look at emails. Those are things that we're not gonna be able to tell from legal bills, right? And it could just be that someone was really comfortable with talking to an attorney, um, to the board attorney, and didn't realize how much money, um, it was costing them. But I think the problem with that is that it had been going on since 2010, and that people had been consistently in different, um, areas, whether it was in administration, whether it was a superintendent, or whether it was the board. And I think what's really troubling is that when the Flint School Board did have in-house counsel for the statements that were made regarding the billing in that particular era, I think that's really concerning to me.
Okay. So I would just, I would just like to just follow, say that, uh, I would like to move forward as quickly as possible and with as much due diligence as possible. I want to go as far as we can with this, because I don't think it's just a matter of recovering money. I want, I want to see some, some justice for the Flint schools and for our, for our students and families, so.
Yeah. And I commend you all, I mean, even, um, voting for the investigation, you have moved forward with that piece to understand what exactly happened. Um, and at this point, you'll be able to understand, you know, how you move forward and how you make sure that, you know, you don't have, um, this excessive billing, um, going on in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Yeah, I just got two quick questions. So in the document, uh, of course, you, uh, described what the blue is. What is the yellow indicative of?
So the, the yellow are services that we found more than one person doing the same work and working on the same assignment. So it's kind of similar, but in a, in a way, the blue services are, they're repetitively billed. Like, so either for that particular, that particular moment, um, when you look at the bill. So let, let's take an example. So, um, when you look at 12, the first page of the sheet.
Yep.
You will see that, um, this person bills for a memorandum that was written, and they charged for reviewing the document. Um, this person billed for the review, that, that is the memorandum, right? Preparation of the memorandum, research, um, correspondence, right? But then if you look all the way at the top, the one that I gave credit for, bill for preparation of the memorandum, right? And then a legal conference with those two people, right? So was it necessary to, for all three of us to do that work? And then also talk about it between ourselves, bill for it, and then charge for each other reviewing an assignment?
So, no, that, that helped out a lot, Attorney Lee. And I like the way that you broke it out at the end, in terms of, uh, on the last page, where you have highlighted and read the, uh, total amount for repetitive. Is, do you have something similar for what we deem, again, the unnecessary? A total amount for that, or is that, is that easy to capture? I'm just trying to build context, and I know you said, again, this is only six years, but just trying to build context around the overall number that we're overcharged.
I'm glad you asked me that, so, um, in my opinion, majority of it was unnecessary.
Okay.
And so, instead of putting the entire number on there, I would like to get an independent...
That's fine.
Right, an independent, um, person such as, or, um, organization such as Plant Moran, to give us that number. The, the purpose of showing the repetitive billing was just to show that this is just on a glance, just a, you know, going through the bills. The actual number that, you know, was unnecessary while is subjective, um, can somewhat be figured out, but should be done by someone who, um, the way I work may not be how you work, right? And you might have thought it was in our best interest to do X, Y, and Z, even if it costs so much, right? So having an independent third party look at that would be the best. That's why it's not a number there.
Thank you.
Okay. Pastor Gilbert?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, through you to Attorney Lee, thank you for coming. Nice to meet you, nice to look at your eyes, see you express yourself, and, uh, and clear the air, 'cause that's what I want, that's what I'm after. I'm after the truth, nothing but the truth, and wherever the light goes, it'll drive the darkness out. Looks like that you're off to a good start.
Thank you.
And we certainly want to know this law firm. We had other administrators, superintendents. So you said 2010, and that it started, what started?
So 2010 is as far back as I have statements for, to clarify. So the earliest, um, statement that I have, and actually, um, you know, they didn't, um, I specifically asked if these people wanted to be, remain unnamed, and they said they, they had no problem with being named. So I'll share the information with you. Um, so Superintendent Linda Thompson, she was a superintendent in the district. And so she said for her, as far back as 2010, she had been sharing that the, the legal bills were excessive. And so her decision to hire in-house counsel was supposed to offset that, and it did not happen. It can, the, the bills continued to be high, even though she had legal bill, legal in-house, right? And so that prompted her to really go through the bills and to look and to see, okay, why are my bills so high, and I actually have a lawyer here on site? So that is as far back as, um, I have not gone further, the prior superintendent than that. I'm not sure, um, if they're available, but I have been reaching out to, um, pretty much anybody who has been on the board or who has been named, that might be someone to talk to.
Thank you. Superintendent Lopez, who is that?
He's the supern- he's the former superintendent before...
Anita.
Um, Anita, Superintendent Anita Stewart, that's in the district now.
His tenure was what and what?
So his tenure, just give me one second, actually have that here.
Sister Monica, I can't hear you. And then after former Superintendent Lopez was Ms. Thompson?
No.
Oh, it's Stewart, the present superintendent, okay. Good, I cleared the air there. The other thing I heard you say as you were coming before us, expressing to us, um, the position of the investigation, or the start of it, and where we are, and your recommendation of Plant Moran. And you trust them?
So I trust them to give us the information that I'm asking for, right? So it's not just a, um, I've already reviewed the bills, right? Um, but when you're doing an investigation, especially in my position, sitting as Board Counsel, I don't want to be the person who gives the objective number, that needs to be an independent fact finder. And so while I've, um, based on what I've seen, I am, uh, willing to put my best foot forward and say that, um, I'm comfortable with what my team has saw. But the fact that there have been other allegations to come out of this, um, I believe that there needs to be more investigation. Now, the, the real question is whether or not the board is comfortable with them doing that investigation. The reason why I recommend it is because they're already looking into our audit work, and I don't see the benefit of having a separate auditing firm to audit our auditors and what they're supposed to be looking at here. If we don't trust them to do this, then we shouldn't trust them with any of our engagements. So, um, that's why I say we should go with them. I still maintain, um, control over the investigation, right? And my final report will come from me. Um, but it's important when you, uh, when you have allegations, to make sure that you have o- objective information and facts, right? Not just subjectively from me.
Thank you. Now, I heard you used the expression colluded with lawyers. Now, don't, don't answer yet, just wait. Who? And what was their position that collu- colluded with lawyers? Now, perhaps you can't say at this time, but the question is, were they board members? Were they janitors? Were they football coaches? Who were they?
Right. So, um, I would share with you all, there's, uh, we're in open session, and this information, as far as I see it, is not confidential. Um, these, the people who provided their statements did not ask to remain confidential. And, um, to that extent, I can say that, um, the people that I spoke with specifically named Vera Perry and Diana Wright, um, also named...
Slow, slow down. Slow, slow down, say it one more time. Thank you.
Sure. Just give me one moment.
And Diana Wright?
That's correct.
And they were...
There was also a previous board president name, just one moment, let me get that for you. And so while I have them, I'll just, um, say that the complaints were that they were having an improper relationship. And by that, I mean, um, going to dinner, doing things that, you know, may have, um...
Influence.
Yes. Influence them, um, or put them in a position for the board attorney to exert influence over them. Um, and that was from, there, there was also information from one administrator who stated that she was concerned that if it wasn't kickbacks, then there was some type of improper relationship. So pretty much everyone I spoke with brought up improper relationship, or possible improper relationship. And this was just based on the fact that the fees continued even after there were presentations given to the board about how the legal fees were impacting the financial situation of the district, that we continued to roll on as if we weren't operating o- in over a million-dollar deficit. And so this is why I believe the forensic imaging is important, because I think it will show possibly where, um, the mindset of some of these individuals were, right? Like I stated earlier, um, you do have people that sometimes heavily depend on legal counsel, um, to help them make decisions. And you all are independent actors, um, but if you ask me to read your board packet, I will let you know that it's your job as a board member to read your board packet. I will not read it for you and then bill the district for that. That's something that is, um, in my eyes, something that a board attorney would advise, right? Instead, um, the Williams firm did bill for reading board packets, something that is your job to do, and my job to help you understand whether or not, um, you have a question about your board packet, but it's not my job to read it, and in the best interest of the district, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be acting in the best interest of the district if I read your board packet and then tell you what to do. Now I'm usurping your authority as a board member, right? And acting in your stead.
Thank you. Uh, two last questions. One is, uh, Lawyer Attorney Kendra Williams, I got 1990. So that 1990 year, what, why is that year significant for Lawyer Kendra Williams? Why is that significant?
It was stated that he started in the 90s. He started working, so he's been working in the district, to my understanding, for over 30 years.
For over 30 years?
Yes.
And the last question is, the one that Brother Walker talked about, the total amount shown in alleged repetitive billing.
Yes.
That, your language says alleged, is, is that what you've, you've been able to uncover in your estimation? Or would you say that is, is just a rough estimate of what you was able to identify?
So that is just a, the, a rough estimate of what I've saw that was billed repetitively. That doesn't mean that it should have even been billed at all.
Thank you.
It's just what was billed repetitively.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Did you have a question, Chris? Bring your, your hand up, I'm asking.
Well, I, I'll say no, I have questions.
Okay, I think, well, after you and then Ms. McNeil.
I'm so sorry. Who, who was the board president when, um, Linda Thompson? Yes, yes, that's her name. You asked me who was implicated, yes. Antoinette Lockett.
Antoinette Lockett.
Yes. It was alleged that she had an improper relationship with Board Counsel. And to what extent, I'm not sure, but, um, yeah, that was alleged.
If, if I may, Madam President, just before, Sister Monica, is, how, do you have the, the time that she was the board president? How long? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dale Monroe?
Okay. Uh, so early, I think...
Pull your mic closer to you, pull, it'll slide to you.
Okay, I, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Board President McIntosh. Um, earlier in your presentation, you, you spoke something about legal liability. Is that liability that will fall to the school district because of some alleged retaliation, um, by someone to someone in the district?
So what I was speaking about earlier was just, okay, so I talked about being a fiduciary one, right? So I, I want to be clear on that. So, mm, as a lawyer, as an attorney for you all, I'm a fiduciary to you, meaning that I should act in the best interest of the board, the Flint Community Schools, at all times, no matter what. So will be, there are several different type of liabilities that can fall on, um, either board members. You all are trustees, which means that you also are fiduciaries for the school board. You should do the same, you should act in the best interest of the school board. If you do not, and you do that purposely on your own, then you can be held liable for that, and you can be sued individually, right? You, not the board. So there are several different liabilities that can attach based on what happens. So earlier, we talked about malpractice liability, that is connected to attorneys, meaning that if in our official capacity, we don't do our job, or we do something to harm you or we breach that fiduciary duty, then we can be sued. Um, there are several things that could happen to us, we could possibly be disciplined and lose our license, things like that.
Okay. Well, is it fair that the actions by, um, Mr. Williams or his law firm went beyond the scope, went outside of the reason that he or they were hired?
So I wouldn't be able to answer that, and I say that only because he was being directed by the board and/or board members. In your board bylaws, it says that the board president and the vice president, to my understanding, can call the legal counsel for counsel at any time, right? And so was he being asked to do things that he shouldn't have been doing? Even if you all asked me to do something, and I believe it not to be in the best interest of the school district, it's my job as an attorney to inform you of that. I'll give you an example. If you asked me to come hang out at a board meeting, like, "Shree's come to the board meeting," and I'd say, "Okay, what do you need me for?" And you say, "I just want you there." And I'd be like, "Well, you want me there, why?" And you say, "'Cause we like you." I'll say, "I can't come because I can't..." I'll say, "I can't come because I can't bill the school district for two hours to sit there for nothing. You should need my help."
And at some point, you know, if we... If there's a proceeding to take one to court, do you anticipate that the amount of dollars that we recover will be greater than the cost to prosecute? I mean, I understand principles and, you know, people should be held accountable, but I'm just talking dollars and cents.
I would say yes, because, I mean, this would just be... So I would say I believe it would be less than what you could recover. And I don't even think, in my opinion, that you would need to go through a lawsuit unless that, you know, this becomes a big, you know, just media frenzy, you know, that happens. But in my opinion, if the attorney... If I lose my bar license, then there's nothing that I can do, right? So I'm gonna do... Even if you guys called me and said I overbilled you, I'm just gonna give you your money back because I don't want any problems. Now, that may not stop the discipline, but it definitely helps to maybe formulate some type of defense, you know, to say, "My business person messed up," something like that, right? I would give you your money back if you could show me repetitive billing. I believe I've given you like 32 pages, right? And when you look at that and you see consistently the same thing billed over and over, and what I'll also just draw your attention to quickly is even in Mr. Williams' contract, it says that anything that can be billed at a paralegal rate, which would be like $75 or $100, will be billed at a paralegal rate. So what are things that paralegals can do? Research, typing memorandums, things that were billed at attorney rates sometimes, right? So there are some things that... I didn't even fully deep dive into this at all because, one, I don't like to waste board time or money. This was just giving you a quick glance and seeing, do we want to go further? Is this something that we're not interested in? Do we want to push full throttle, right? This is your decision and your investigation. So the reason for the update was to show, based on the allegations that have come forth, I do believe that there are facts that could lead us to conclusions that not only have we been overbilled, but there have been other things going on that we're not aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McNeil? Dr. Joyce?
Madam President, to Attorney Sharice Lee. Vice President Danielle Green sent a statement. She said she sent it to you.
She did.
And she would like for you to read the statement. Is that possible?
Sure.
I'd just like to know, too. It's surprising that we have a really big crowd at every meeting we've had. Have you guys noticed, basically, the media has been here and there's not one person here tonight? Is it somebody here? Or I'm like, 'cause we're... Oh, there y'all guys were to say, "What? Then went on? Y'all done boycotted us? Okay."
Okay. So I have that statement here. It says, "Hello, Attorney Lee..." Ready? Okay. "Hello, Attorney Lee. Let me start from the beginning. When I became treasurer of FCS Board in 2019, I discovered that it was an astronomical amount of money, almost a million dollars, that was going out of the district's budget to the Williams firm. It was very concerning to me, so I started asking questions and looking for answers. In the beginning, I spoke to several board members, including Ms. Perry, who was the former treasurer 12 years prior to me. I spoke to Casey Lester, who was secretary treasurer, Diana Wright, who was the president. No one seemed to be interested in what I had to say. Some agreed that we were paying the Williams firm a lot of money, but seemed to feel that it was justified. I got a response like, 'That's how it's always been. He's been with the district for more than 20 years and there's nothing we can do about it.'" Sorry. This is very small. Okay. Okay. I got a response. "That's how it's always been. He's been with the district for more than 20 years and there's nothing we can do about it," from board members, Perry, Wright, and Lester. Collectively, the board did not appear to care. I even spoke on it publicly at board meetings and the entire board jumped to Kendall's defense, Kendall Williams' defense. They just sang his praises of how great he is and all that he's done for the district. I could not get one board member to even look at the check run so they could see what I was talking about. So what I decided to do was have the CFO carry to start sending the check run to the whole board in hopes they would see what I was talking about and understand where I was coming from. That didn't work, so I sat down with former superintendent Dr. Lopez, who was already concerned about the amount being spent for a board attorney. He and I had several conversations and we collectively agreed that something needed to be done. He was doing what he could with tremendous pushback and so was I. One thing that stands out in my memory is that he was being accused of being jealous of Attorney Williams and that is why he was trying to get rid of the Williams firm. Ultimately, I ended up meeting with community activities, Arthur... I'm sorry. Community activist Arthur Woodson, who warned me that the board was coming for me or coming after me because I was messing with Kendall's money. I was confused and very concerned. After explaining what was going on, he, like myself, could not believe what was going on in FCS. I was warned to be careful that people were watching me and now following me. Later, it was confirmed that I was being investigated by the Williams firm at the request of Diana Wright. From my understanding, a background check was conducted, credit report pulled, and my license plate ran in the attempt to try and prove I did not live in Flint. When I spoke to Casey Lester, who had been appointed president of the board in 2020, and he suggested I resign from the board, I refused. I spoke to Kendall Williams, who also suggested I resign. Again, I refused. I later spoke to Diana Wright and we did have a brief conversation, but unfortunately, I can't recall what was said. It's been a while, but this is what happened to the best of my memory. If you have more questions, don't hesitate to reach out. I'll do my best to answer them. So we received-
With permission, can I just make one statement that I'd like, in full disclosure, to disclose that I was one of the activists also that she reached out to? And I did help her write a letter defending herself and I spoke at a board meeting when this was... I distinctly recall all of this happening. But I just wanted to get it out there that I did speak on Danielle's behalf. I didn't know her at the time, and I didn't really know Art Woodson at the time either, but I did make a public statement and helped her craft a defense.
So pretty much with... That was the consensus that when you spoke out against it, things bad, things were gonna happen to you, you know, that you were gonna be retaliated against. And former superintendents, like I said, former board members, they either felt like they didn't have the votes or for whatever reason. This is where the allegations of possible, you know, collusion between trying to have the fees or because it was one of those things that the board collectively couldn't come together to vote against it. And realizing that we were a deficit district, you really can't understand, even knowing that Superintendent Linda Thompson hired an attorney in-house, and then you still continue to get astronomical bills. That's very concerning to me, even when... And so I was concerned at first, obviously, being an attorney, looking at bills and thinking, wow, this would be my worst nightmare, right? For someone to be like, "Oh, your bills are totally excessive," or things like that. But immediately, when I looked at the bills, you can tell on the face that it's very repetitive. I mean, just from the highlight. And if you look at them, and I suggest that you really take your time and take a look at them, you will see where you'd be like, "This is the same thing. It's just maybe worded a little diff..." Sometimes it's not worded differently. So if that wasn't enough, Superintendent Lopez refusing to pay the bills, I'm not gonna do any more work for you all if you refuse to pay me. I'm gonna go about my way. So the fact that he was not getting paid for a long time, and then months later, the superintendent that didn't want to pay your bills is gone, and then you immediately get paid? I would have to ask, like, what did the board know about that, right? And so this is why I think you need the deeper dive. And I'm not really a computer person, so that's where my expertise stops.
I didn't do this.
Just one second. I'd also like to say this, too, as a former board member. At that time, I remember when Ms. Green brought the concerns up about the payment, the cost of the legal fees, and Mr. Williams at that time agreed to cut his fees by a large percent. Now, if that actually happened, I don't know. One of the reasons that I was reluctant to really deal with Mr. Williams at that time is because we were in the middle of the water litigation and he was presiding over that lawsuit. And we knew, and first of all, they wouldn't even let nobody, even in the Flint Community Schools, to check on the water. So anything that was for the water lawsuit and moving that forward, I was not gonna stand in the way of. And we had been paying him all the time. Now he's finally, I felt in my mind, was going to do the work that he really should have been doing to get those type of monies. And we did win the lawsuit, but ultimately, GISD ended up with their names on the monies that was won from that lawsuit. And I don't think they've gotten paid yet, but the consensus, and it was stated that the money automatically has to go to GISD. And I couldn't understand that. And the Williams firm told us at that time, that's just how it was and that it wasn't up to us. It was decided, I guess, by judiciary presiders over this lawsuit, judge or whoever that was, because we were not allowed to go. And then after-
Is this the same as the special education fund lawsuit? Is that the same lawsuit?
The water lawsuit and the special education lawsuit ties in together because so much of the special education situations came from the water lawsuit. So yes, they were all kind of tied together. So for those reasons, I was reluctant to deal with him. And he had been in the district for so many years and we were finally in the middle of trying to get down to business because we weren't going to court, we weren't talking about suing, we weren't doing nothing. Even though I did feel some type of way, I felt like, as a board member, like you said, one, we weren't gonna have the votes to get rid of him. That's number one. Number two, we needed him in that moment because our backs were against the wall with a water lawsuit and we knew we had an unbelievable deficit, that we did not have any monies to pay. So we needed to win that lawsuit. Now, what I found strange, and when I found... Because I did listen to Ms. Green's concerns, at that time, I was iced on the board, standing alone, so I had nobody that I could go to on the board, like this information and that information. I had to sort it out myself. So that's what I was trying to do. When it dawned on me that it was an issue was when I found out we won the lawsuit, but the GISD was gonna be the recipients of those monies. And then when we asked him why, he really couldn't give us a grand statement. And then after he left, they blamed it on the fact that Casey, the former president at the time, they said he signed off and agreed to give GISD the money. So I already had heard the allegations. I already was a little shaky, but I didn't have any hardcore proof other than the allegations. And I knew we wouldn't have never had the votes to get rid of him. But when that happened, I knew we were in real trouble and no matter what we did, we would never survive or come out of the deficit or the situation that we were in. And the most disturbing for me in all of this is that I'm finding out he was being paid out of general funds. Okay? We need our general funds. And to know that he was getting paid this kind of money out of general funds when we had a deficit that is constantly elevating, at one point, it was up to like $19 million or something, and we were asking the community, the taxpayers, to give us money for this. And, you know, we were, you know, trying to leverage this and do that. And then when I found that out, that we went through all that and paid... Because we paid attorneys. We paid these attorneys, butts of law, and the Williams firm to represent us for the lawsuit. And then to hear somebody else was gonna be rewarded the money... I mean, I'm no attorney, but I'm no fool either. And I knew that I couldn't see any judge or jury saying, "You're suing her and I'm gonna say you won this case, but she gets the money." When we have... We don't even have water still to this day for our students flowing properly. Okay? And then we have the majority of our kids, we have a vast majority of our students with learning issues, behavioral problems, and things of that nature, which led us up to this lawsuit and how all of this stuff got going. And I ended up mixed into it because I kind of had a feeling and I had expressed concerns that somebody was stealing. That was painfully clear to me when I first got here. But you have to be in a certain position on this board to get your hands on certain documents. We were told as board members, we couldn't speak to the press. We were told as board members, we didn't talk to the superintendent, only the president. So those walls were set up where it was no getting the information or doing your own investigation unless you sat in that seat, which is why I believe I was attacked immediately when I got here. Because I've always expressed concern about the third-party billing. I've always expressed concerns about unethical behavior, even though I couldn't get my hands on any hardcore evidence. So this is how this thing kind of snowballed out of control when we got here. But immediately when I got here, I was the assistant secretary slash treasurer, and Ms. Perry was the treasurer. And we went into our first meeting and Ms. Green also sat on that committee with us. The first thing I asked the Raymond Company at the time, I said, "Well, first of all, because I don't know a lot about this, but I do know how to do basic adding and subtracting, I need the balance to all bank accounts. I need our balances to our accounts." And they said, "We have like, that's 20 accounts. So what? Write them all down on some paper, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5." I could not understand why that concept was so difficult when we have this big firm that we're paying hundreds of thousands, even millions of dollars, that's supposed to be able to tell us our bottom line, and they never could tell us our bottom line. And when I asked for those things, Ms. Perry told me, "He ain't got time to be getting you all that. He got a day job to do." And I knew then I was never coming back to another meeting because I'm not gonna waste my time. And if I say, "What is the balance on the account?" And you a million-dollar company and you can't tell me a balance on a bank account, like I always used to tell them, Stevie Wonder could see what was going on with that. So I stopped participating because I'm not gonna come pretend like I'm a board member. Either I'm gonna be a board member or I'm not. But show up and shuck and jive because I can't hold my tongue. So at that point, when I did that, that's when I became in real trouble. And that's when I landed over there for two years straight, iced with nobody on the board dealing with me, period. It wasn't until this situation with Lopez and the support for Ms. Wright fell off and the board, for whatever reason, turned on her, which I didn't know because nobody on the board dealt with me. I was iced. But I didn't have any personal issues with either of them. So, you know, hey, whatever. You speaking, I'm speaking. If you're not, I'm not. But then it became painfully clear when we started negotiating and sitting down with some talks about building this new school over there at Mott. To me, this is my opinion, since I am a board member that was here for some of this, I'm gonna speak my truth. It was painfully clear to me at that point, the fix was in and it was not in the best interest of our students. Even though I had expected that and speculated those things, it was painfully clear that moving this district forward for survival was not on the agenda and it was not the goal of everybody sitting on the board or on the administration for that matter. You know, it was clear that something was going on and it was set up systemically. It was well organized. Okay? And I'm sitting to myself saying, "This looks like the Rico Act or something," because they got players on every... In every area, on every team, on all sides of the house. So I just wanted to let you know what my situation was, and she is right. When you ask about something like that, you got dealt with. Okay? Period. You got dealt with. If you could... I was even told by some board members that I was gonna be blackballed for trying to speak up and, you know, be proactive for the community. And I told them that that entity didn't put me in this seat, the voters did, and that's who I was gonna represent for. So this has been going on and it's been painfully clear. And that is why we have such a high turnover of superintendents. Because anybody who's came to this district, from what I can see- Because anybody who's came to this district, from what I can see, and from the people that I have spoken to, if you speak out and operate in integrity, you will be dealt with. So that's it. Go ahead, Ms. McNeil.
Um, to my new board members and everything President McIntyre is saying is the truth. Uh, McIntosh and Laura McIntyre. Now, we community actives. We came to this district and came to this board because of this very thing that we couldn't win in the streets on. And so we got on this seats and we began that fight. And we began the fight because we knew what was going on. I can tell you now, the three of us has been in that man's office, trying to throw us off the board because we asked questions. And so now here we are again. If you don't want to get attacked, then you might not want to sit in this seat. If you don't want to get abused, you might not want to sit in this seat. Because what we're talking about is run deeper than that. I got more enemies than I ever thought I had. Uh, because I made some statement, uh, because, Madam President, we made some decision. Laura McIntyre made some decision. We don't talk about it in public, but since we're here talking about this, I'm gonna agree with, uh, that we move forward with what Attorney Lee requested because we've got a lot of thing on this menu. And I can tell you now, it's going to get ugly. And we are females, and we have to really, we fight among each other, but we got the man up and fight against the forces that's fighting against us. It's impossible for a person to get a million-some dollars and we can't even get our kids a bottle of water to come to school. It's impossible that I sit and talking to school three and four years, and I had to take my little hundred and twenty-five dollars to go buy, uh, paper towels, buy supplies for my kids, and I'm just a sub. And here's a guy gets a million dollars. And we have board members sitting here, rubber-stuffing everything. I'm ready for the fight, and like I said, I don't mind the fight. But we got to get started and get going. Thank you, Attorney Lee. But it is a fight because our kids should be way further ahead if we cut this stealing out and cut this lying out and give these kids a pencil and a paper and a book. And this man here making a million-some dollars, unbelievable. And I'm upset about it. And that's why I ran for this seat, is to fight for the kids. It gets nothing out of, none of us get anything out of. So they can't, you know, we're not getting anything, nobody's giving me any kickback.
Right, that's right. Nope, nope, not a dime.
All right, then, we can fight.
All right, Mr. Walker said he had one more thing, and then we're going to make a vote as to how to move forward because Ms. McNeil is right, we have a big package.
No, you're good, yep. And I'll be really, really quick. As it relates to the contracts, um, because again, those have to be renewed every so often. Will that be a part of the forensic audit, or is that a part of your work? I'm just trying to understand, is there consistency in terms of pricing? Or do you see a major jump at some point, as well as we're looking at the course of years that we're looking at? And, and, and talking about his contracts with us, I'm sorry.
Right, so essentially, what I will be looking at, um, for my firm is what we believe to be, um, totally kind of unnecessary work, right? Where it didn't need to be performed, so having three people in negotiations is not necessary, right? Unless we have assignments for each one of those people, or there's a reason why one person wouldn't be particularly competent. But even in school district negotiations, we have normally our HR director or our superintendent, we have people from the district to come. So typically, one attorney should be enough, right? If you're going to have an attorney. So situations like that would be things that I would look at from a position of being the negotiator before, right? Um, or legal counsel or board counsel to say, okay, you know, was this something that, was necessary, right? But that will be overviewed and looked at, right, by, um, however we decide to remove, move forward. So the purpose of my report and my final report for the investigation will be the sum totals of what you're looking for, right? The total number of hours that we believe was overbilled, that total number. This particular report just gives you simply repetitive billing, right? It doesn't go into, um, nowhere near as much as in-depth as should it have been billed? Should three people have worked on it, like those type of things? So when you talk about the contracts, um, you mean specifically for, will I be handling what was said in the contract and whether or not that matched up to this?
Exactly, yeah.
Exactly. Yes, so also that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Del Marone.
Thank you, President McIntosh. Through you to Attorney Lee. Have you done any investigation? We talked much tonight, or somewhat to some degree, about ethics and, and possible punishment or sanctions against an attorney or the firm. I think more the attorneys than the firm. Have you done any investigation, or do you know if Attorney, um, Williams has ever gone through that process and been in front of, I don't know what it's called, the board?
Oh, like the ethics board? Uh, like whether or not he's been sanctioned? So, no, I wouldn't be able to say. So typically, when attorney grievance, they have different levels of disciplinary action. So there could, you could get a discipline that is not public. You can get a discipline that's public. You can get a disbarment that's public, like there are different levels to it. So we could check and look at his record to see if something's there. But that doesn't necessarily mean just because we can't see it, it's not there, if that makes sense.
I, I'll, I'll say thank you on that, and, you know, I, it's something that might want to be looked at.
So at this time, I think we should, um, make a decision as to where we're going to go with our investigation. For the record too, I also want to state that that year I asked for that information, we did come up short several hundred thousand dollars. And we do not know what happened to the money, or we never found the money. I'm not saying anybody had it, but the Raymond Company was not, you remember that, Monica? I don't know if you, but the Raymond Company was not, they were off. And they weren't able to tell us where those dollars were. So, anyway, moving on. So at this point, um-
Can we make a motion?
No, I was saying, the year that I questioned for the money, we ended up being off at the end of the year, oh, well over a hundred thousand dollars, maybe even. It started off, it was supposed to be one hundred thousand dollars. And when they finished, it was over two hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know how much it really was. I mean, because it's not like they're going to show you any documents or be honest with you. So I just want to put that out there too as well. Um, at this time, uh, we're gonna, uh, let Ms., uh, Attorney Lee, let us, refresh us on our options. And as a board, then we'll vote on which direction we want to go to move forward with our investigation because we did already as a board, vote for an investigation. So now, we're going to vote which direction we're going to take our investigation. And what is our options, Ms. Attorney Lee?
So you're able to, um, write a letter to the Williams Law Firm, um, requesting a review, that they do a review of their bills, right? So I would say that's like mediation, right? Where you mediate your issue with another person. You also have the option to move forward with looking at of having a forensic investigator, um, come in specifically to look at the computers, look at emails that went back and forth, um, to give some context to, um, some of the relationships that have been called into question. You also have the option to just immediately, um, have my firm just continue to, um, do the deep dive into the bills, um, specifically coming up with a number regarding how much we believe, um, that we have been overbilled. I caution you in that effect to, um, there could possibly be statements later on stating that I was not impartial considering that I am your board attorney, right? That's understandable. And then also, you have the option to directly sue, go directly to court, finish the investigation with the number in the bills that you have, and make your claims. But I think it's always best to move forward with the most and the best information that you have, right? So what you have before you is a rough estimate, again, of repetitive billing. Not all the different ways that we could have been overbilled, meaning that I did not do a deep dive into whether a paralegal could have performed this. Or like, instead of being billed at two hundred and fifty dollars, could I have been billed at a hundred dollars? Those are the type of things that still would have to happen with these bills and, um, as far back as you would like to go. So, go ahead.
Ms. Laura.
I, I was just ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, what's your motion?
Do you want to make it?
Um, I would like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Just one second. You also have the attorney grievance at your disposal. So, um, you are able to file a complaint. And the attorney grievance commission, you can also give them a copy of the bills. And they can do their own investigation into it. Even in that respect, um, the bills are light, right? So you have to think about, would you rather go through the bills or have someone go through the bills? Or would you rather ask someone else to go through the bills, right? I personally like to know what's in something before I give it to someone, right? So that's just a thought.
Okay. So what are you ladies' motions that you have on the floor?
And you can do that.
So let me ask you this too, Ms. Lee.
Sorry.
And we can also do some of these things in conjunction with one another?
Yes, you can do contemporaries, that's, that's correct. So you could, you could, you could talk to attorney grievance, that's simply a form. You could even start with what I have done right here, right, to attorney grievance. They can choose to go deeper, they could not, right? It was just, I think the more you have, the more compelling it is, right? So that's just a thought.
Okay. Okay, so go ahead, Ms. McNeil.
So I'd like to make a motion that we have, we conduct or have conducted an initial forensic investigation that includes but is not necessarily limited to a deep dive into the Kendall Williams Firm's bills so that we can have more investigation, at which time we can get another summary of events and then decide how to proceed further, with the understanding that we will proceed further and that we also, um, send, or we request an attorney grievance commission investigation.
What, so give me your numbers, because you ad libbed between there, and I have to call back your motion. So your motion is to do-
That we do an initial forensic investigation that includes but is not limited to a deep dive into Attorney Williams' bills.
Okay, stop right there, stop right there. So are you voting for Ms. Lee to do that deep dive before turning it over to, uh?
Oh, Plant, Plant, Moran?
Plant Moran, or?
Right. I will help them on the legal aspect as to whether or not a paralegal or an attorney could do the work.
So this is done with the understanding that they're already doing our forensic audit? So this would be the initial forensic investigation? So they're doing our annual audit?
They're doing our audit. They do not do anything forensic. Forensic means they're capturing, um, pictures of-
Right, it's a basic audit that they do. But what she's saying is while they're doing their basic audit, since we have to pay them and they have to audit us anyway, to allow them at that time to do the forensic portion as well to try to save the districts some money. Is that my understanding?
Yeah. Yes, that's what I'm saying, yes.
I support.
Okay. It has been moved and properly supported that, um, we move forward with the forensic audit from Plant Moran with Ms. Lee's, uh, looking into prior to to make sure that our bill with Plant Moran does not get overran because that's not the point of us doing this, to run up another bill. So we have Ms. Lee smoking it over. Then we have the deep dive with Plant. Is that what we said, is that what you said? She go, okay, I'm just making sure because Monica laughing at me. That usually means I'm messing something up when most are laughing at me.
Madam President, Madam President, for, for point of information that, that, that you just said, could Attorney Lee just kind of clear the air a little bit about what that means?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lee.
That's important.
Okay, about, I'm sorry, about what, what means?
Mr. Pastor Gilbert.
You mean the forensic audit?
Yeah, and, and how, uh, Sister McIntyre was able to say the get to the deep dive part.
Right.
So I guess, my point of information is, you will be in the lead or you will be parallel with Plant Moran in the, in this process?
So I would be leading the investigation. Plant Moran will be looking into the allegations specifically that have come up in this investigation, meaning the relationships between board, uh, former board counsel and, um, board members, superintendents, anything that has come up that we've discussed today that we want to know more about. And by forensic, that means imaging computers, looking at emails, taking a look into the electronic piece of this that we can't see with the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then you also said, and also in conjunction with him, this information going before the attorney grievance board? Okay, so the motion that, uh, Treasurer McIntyre has on the floor is to move forward with the forensic audit, which will be, which will have Attorney Lee deeply involved, and to also turn this information over to the attorney grievance board for review. Okay, so now that the motion is on the floor, we have a second. It has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Del Marone.
Thank you. I, I was writing down our different options of the letter going to court and that. Uh, so we mentioned the forensic audit, and then there was a continue the investigation. Is that, can we say that's one in the same, or not?
Uh, well, I meant, so I'll clarify. I meant continue the investigation at the point of just me solely, without an additional fact finder. But I was, I spoke to that earlier, meaning that if you only have your board counsel as the fact finder in a situation where we're investigating previous board counsel, I think that that could, um, bring up issues of, you know, conflict of interest in the sense that I'm working for you. So-
Thank you. And, and also, I think this is the way to go because we're, let me say, early in the process. I don't think we're ready to go to court tomorrow or next week. And I don't think we're ready to go to, uh, where the attorney grievance investigation thing, because we don't know the numbers, uh, you know, if we send a letter to them, we're going to be going on their word, what they, what they say. So I think this is the way to go. So I'll be in support.
I didn't catch the last part, Mr. Del Marone.
So I think this is the way to go.
Okay.
Everything else is too early to jump into, I believe.
Okay, so you did say yes to the attorney grievance process though, right?
Yeah.
So that was included in her motion, so you do understand that.
But you mean, once we have the information, right? Once we have the information-
I want Mr. Del Marone to understand though, if we vote yes on that, it won't come back to him to say yes. Grievance is decided that whatever is found, and if it is, Ms. Lee will let us know if, or whatever Plant Moran says. And then the next step, we're voting on is to take it to the attorney grievance board, right? Ms. Laura, that is your motion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would not happen until after we collect enough information?
Right, so once the information is collected, I would give you the information so you know what it is. But it would already have been decided that it's going to the attorney grievance commission. And, um, in overbilling issues, typically if you've been overbilled, you get your money back. So it's kind of minus the court and letting this particular tribunal try to resolve it, right? Um, and if it's not resolved, then you do have the option to move forward.
Okay. Is there any further questions from the board? Okay, seeing, seeing there's no further questions, we're going to vote and decide to, um, when I call your name, vote yea, or we can do it by the ayes. So those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it and the motion passes six? Six in, uh, Ms. Green's assent.
Madam President, as, as a point of order, I think it might be better-
To one, one at a time?
To do a roll call.
Okay, we'll do the roll call, vote to satisfy the-
And the reason is because we are, we're on record as board members. And we're on record as, even though we're voting individually, we are speaking as one voice.
Right.
And that's very clear.
Yeah, well, we've been doing a aye to Pastor Gilbert, but I'm going to accommodate our new member. He holding me to a higher standard, so let me up my game. All right, we're going to, um, honor, honor our Pastor Gilbert, our brother and our board member. So we're going to do one at a time. As I call your name, signify yes to support or nay not to support the motion, Ms. Laura?
Y- yes.
All righty, Dr. Joyce McNeil?
Yes.
All right, uh, Mr. Christmas Del Marone?
Yes.
All right, uh, Pastor Gilbert?
Yes.
And Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And myself, it's a yes. The motion passes six. Good to the good, and Ms. Green is absent, moving forward. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, board members, Mr. Van Weer from the True Law Firm was unable to join us this evening. Ms., uh, Elston spoke with him today.
Thank you.
And he has confirmed that he will adjust his calendar to join us for our fall workshop. Um, we are looking to hold the workshop as soon as we receive confirmation of the audit completion from Plant Moran. Are there any questions as it pertains to that piece? Thank you. I will now turn the floor over to the interim superintendent, Superintendent Jones, to introduce us to our next guest of the evening's agenda.
All right. Um, we're going to ask Dr. Brian Beverly to come. Uh, it was the board's desire to hear from Michigan State University, who will be doing, uh, professional development work, uh, with Flint Community Schools. Dr. Beverly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Greetings to Board President McIntosh, esteemed board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Jones. It's an honor and pleasure to be here with you all, um, come to you all. Um, as a former, uh, board member in the Lansing School District, I call it a recovering board member. Uh, just finished my term, uh, December of 2020. Um, definitely appreciate and recognize the long hours that you put in, um, the, the perspective that you all bring, um, and the, the passion that you bring for, uh, change, for the betterment of all of your students. So just wanted to recognize that upfront. Um, appreciated the previous conversation, great questions, um, as well as putting students first, which I think is, uh, where, where, where all boards should be. So thank you for that. Um, I don't have the clicker in my hand, so I can't control the PowerPoint.
Is the screen share, Stephen?
Technology is not always your friend, I know that.
My eyes are sixty-five years, I can't see it. Right here, right here?
Yeah.
You do have the packet? I did print, okay, they already have it, perfect. I have one, thank you. I don't want to belabor the time.
Members of the audience, please bear with us. We will be with you shortly.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can see it right there. Right, that's wrong.
Well, things break down. To your pla... It's completely up to you if you want to go ahead.
No, that's wrong.
Okay, for sure, I know it's, it's already been a long night and I want, uh, want you all to, um, get, get back to families and whatnot. Uh, so first off, appreciate, um, the support, um, from the last board meeting. Uh, you all, uh, voting to, um, continue to invest in professional learning for educators here in Flint, um, and, and passing, uh, the contract for the Fellowship of Instructional Leaders. Um, in our packet, I just want to provide a bit of an overview and, uh, at, at the end, um, if there are additional questions or throughout, please don't hesitate to ask. So they'll be providing an overview of the over, of the Fellowship of Instructional Leaders, which is a series of professional developments, uh, workshops that I do, uh, myself and my team lead, uh, with instructional leadership teams, the principal and teacher leaders in each of the schools. In addition, uh, we also have, um, been fortunate to have been the recipient of some grants from the Mott Foundation to provide leadership coaching, um, and support implementation of the strategic plan for the district. Uh, the next slide you'll see, uh, is the, uh, MSU Kato outreach team. I wanted to be sure to put them out front. Um, it is not Brian Beverly that does all this work, that it is a team, uh, with me. The majority of, of the team are former superintendents and principals who have led high-performing schools across the state and/or turnaround efforts, um, to, turning, uh, low-performing schools into high-performing schools. So those are, uh, that's the majority of, of the team that supports this work. The next slide is a, a photo of, um, one of the ending, uh, workshops of the Fellowship of Instructional Leaders, where, uh, it's important to recognize that the hard work that each of the educators brings with us, um, they bring their, their hard hats and their lunch pails whenever we meet with them, generally on Saturdays, um, Saturday mornings, we're, we're with them, um, from about nine o'clock till, uh, three-thirty in the afternoon on a Saturday. Um, those are, uh, nice spring Saturdays when folks are rather be in their garden. Those are fall football Saturdays. Those are sometimes Saturdays when folks could be out doing holiday shopping, but they're spending their time, uh, with us, working to improve, uh, teaching and learning, uh, in, in your district. So I wanted to highlight, recognize their efforts. The next slide highlights the MSU school turnaround framework. Obviously, the, the goal there in the middle is to increase student achievement. There's a focus on impactful leadership. Uh, that's some of the work that goes into, uh, the instructional leadership teams. Uh, but it also connects to the Mott work as well, because we have, uh, coaches, um, at the district level and at each of the schools from our team as well. So that's a two-pronged effort around impactful leadership. Systemic use of multiple measures of data, right? Uh, school improvement data, student achievement data, behavior data, attendance data, but also perception data, use of surveys, right, things of that nature. Process data, looking at how schools go about their business, not just the outcomes, okay? Uh, looking at responsive and coherent supports, uh, particularly from leadership in central office, making sure that what happens at the school level is aligned to what the district's goals are, right? Because sometimes there can be some disconnects. And so part of the work of the fellowship is ensuring that there's, uh, some alignment there. Intensive student learning and support, obviously, without the teaching and learning components. Thank you. Uh, it's, it's a challenge to, uh, make improvements to student achievement. Is there a click? Thank you, thank you. Uh, without, uh, intensive, uh, support for, for teaching and learning, it's hard to make impacts on student achievement. Um, and then obviously, uh, rigorous curriculum. The theory of action for the fellowship starts with the instructional leadership team. Again, the principal and teacher leaders coming together, uh, doing leadership training with, uh, MSU. The notion of the leadership training is not coming to us and sitting and just listening to MSU folks talk at them. Our work is to facilitate the work that the schools are already doing, okay? So we de- develop protocols to help facilitate their work on the ground, right? And then also team-to-team sharing to understand what's working in one, in, at one school, what can be learned from that and applied at another school, right? So we facilitate those conversations. The, those leadership trainings are focused on, uh, the instructional core, improving and implementing instructional, high-quality. Um, and then again, that, that end goal for increased student achievement. Taking a little closer look at what I talk about, the instructional core. That's the student and the teacher in the presence of content. If you make any change to one of those, you need to make some subsequent changes to the other, right? If I make a change to the curriculum, I need to provide some additional supports to the teacher and then the teacher needs to do something different for the student. We can't continue to do the same things if we make some changes. That's that basic concept. Beyond that, there's a, there's a important notion of developing a strong professional community. Instructional leadership teams need to develop that professional community within the school to push on school culture and climate, and then across the district, developing a strong sense of professional community is important. Make sure that there's coherence, right? We've talked, uh, President, Board President McIntosh talked about the number of superintendents we've had in this district over a number of years, right? New superintendent comes in, they've got an agenda, they've got a game plan. Our work has been to facilitate school leaders understanding how to align to that vision, for me superintendent. Well, then the following fall, we got a new superintendent, we got to switch gears and they have a different priorities. Well, then we, a new superintendent, we have to shift again, right? So our work has been to help school leaders make sense of those shifts and direction from superintendent to superintendent. Effective Instructional Leadership Team, that's that acronym, I L T, are active in the school's professional learning community. They are leaders in their schools. They observe classrooms. They're not just focused on their own classroom, but they're thinking about instruction writ large across the school. So they're going in and supporting their colleagues around what instruction looks like. They use data to improve instruction and make decisions, right? We so, we facilitate their understanding and their use of data on a weekly, daily, hourly basis. Establishing a culture for teaching and learning, right? Understanding what students need and then not just understanding those needs, but also, uh, soliciting their input and identifying their own needs, right? So how do, how do you, uh, facilitate student voice into your teaching and learning? We ensure alignment across, again, all of the education system and then developing compassionate relationships with students, with parents and with colleagues and the entire community. Responsibilities of those who participate in the fellowship, uh, shaping a vision of, for academic success for all students, that is an important piece, right? They are responsible for helping to shape that vision. They take ownership of that. They also take ownership of cultivating leadership on, on others, right? So thinking about how can they support their colleagues in becoming stronger educators, stronger with instruction, but also stronger leaders within their school community. We don't do anything without focusing on improving instruction, right? Everything, every session that we do incorporates modeling what good instruction looks like, right? So we tailor each session to incorporate some specific strategies that participants can then go back and use. They're with us on Saturday, they can use that same strategy on Monday, right? And we give them particular protocol sheets to help facilitate their use of those strategies. And then again, coordinating people, data and system around continuous school improvement. So here is an example of a, uh, uh, an agenda from this summer's, Summer Institute. Uh, you'll see session outcomes. Uh, each session is, uh, incorporates, uh, different activators to, um, to get educators' brains thinking about, uh, professional community, improving instruction, improving culture and climate. And then those protocols that I, that I just spoke to, um, that they could then take back, um, and incorporate in their classroom. So for instance, if we're using a particular protocol to have them look at their data, well, then they can use that same protocol with their students in, in having their students look at their own data, right? Question?
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
Um, before we go further?
Please.
Um, you was talking about a lot of stuff, it's data-driven.
Yes, ma'am.
And the, um, the, uh, as a public administrator and a researcher, sometimes data-driven can also be a conflict of interest. How do you handle that, like a lot of your programs? Maybe the teacher cannot even use that for the particular circumstances of where her room is at. So how do you address that? You know, like some of this instructional teaching? Do you think it fits one mode fit all, teacher?
No, we actually talk about how to differentiate instruction to, to support all students, right? And so we have, um, we'll, we'll talk about during our delivery of the professional learning, that if you have, for instance, some high flyers, here's how you might, uh, modify the particular, um, protocol for your high-flying students. Here's how you might modify it for some of your, uh, lower-performing students. Or here's how you might, uh, break students into groups in order to help facilitate their own peer-to-peer supports.
So basically, teachers are just following your model, the model that you have in place? They don't have the luxury to create a model of...
So, uh, uh, yeah, so let me back up. What, what we're helping them do is to facilitate the work that they're already supposed to be doing, right? So if they're looking at, um, a curriculum review, for instance, right? We facilitate their ability to do that work, right? And then they can go back to the school and replicate that. We, we don't, we don't push the quote-unquote MSU way, right? What we do is we bring folks together to think about the work that they already, they already need to be looking at data, right? So here is a series of steps that they can take to look at data and make some significant and, and impactful decisions, right? Um, in a way that can also be tailored to how they do that similar work with their students or with their, uh, departmental or grade-level teams back at the schools.
So do your data include any research for the damage that has been done on the Flint, uh, community due to the poison water? Do that data addresses that, where the teachers can, uh, modify it?
Sure.
Because our kids is so different from any district. So a lot of time I'm, this might not work, uh, but I, I, it doesn't work all the time. For each kid is so different in a classroom.
Sure.
Depending on the damage that has been done.
Sure.
So how do we, what data you have to help that with?
I'm sorry, apologize, I mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The data that we use is the school's and the district's own data, right? We're not bringing in mock data for them to look at, right? We're bringing in their own data that we pull, um, from the da, the district's systems and then we facilitate their understanding of that data so they can identify those students who need those, uh, special supports.
Okay. Any other questions, board members?
Yeah.
Okay, I also like to add that we had, we have already ready voted on the fellowship and Ms. Laura requested for him to come before the board to answer our questions. So just so we're clear on that. Okay, who all have there, who all wanted to ask questions?
Yeah, I'm still going.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, no worries, but if you have one right now, I'll take it. Board Member McIntosh, if you have one right now, I'll take it.
So there's like several things, what's the, what's the theoretical pedagogy that's underlying this program?
Uh, as a, different from what I shared on the, the screen?
Like what is the theory, theoretical underpinnings? Is it coming from Friday, for example?
So the instructional core piece is Richard Elmore?
Richard who?
Elmore.
And how is this linked to the Harvard Group?
Richard Elmore is a faculty member formerly at Harvard.
No, this isn't Harvard, this is the Harvard Group? The Global Family Research Project? It's called the Harvard Project, it's not affiliated with Harvard University anymore? Is he affiliated with it?
I don't know if he's affiliated with the Harvard Group, I can't speak on that.
So...
Madam President, point of order. It's, it's fine that they have a conversation between them, but I want to know what they're saying. I'm losing, I'm losing.
My voice?
Dr. Beverly, Beverly, I understand Sister McIntyre, but I can't.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So here, here's, here's the deal. I'm concerned, just like we were talking with Attorney Lee, about some established practices of the reproduction of inequality in our district. I'm looking down a rabbit hole of grant money laundering, basically, in my opinion. And the more I look into this program, the more nonprofits, the nonprofit industrial complex I see connected to it. So I see here the Harvard Group. I see the Schwartz Foundation. I see, there's some other foundation here. The more I dig into the Foundation Incorporated, like everybody's getting their hand greased. Look, I mean, we can have a, a longer conversation. But I think Dr. Joyce has rightly pointed out, is this what's right for our district? When I look at the people who are all out of state, who are all part of these nonprofit organizations that have their fingers in our pie, I don't know if it's exactly the right thing. And I'm... And I'm willing to look at it, like I said, I, I want to know what the theoretical underpinnings of this are, like I'm.
Sure.
So.
So I'm 100% transparent. I don't know any of the groups that you mentioned, I've heard of the Harvard Group. So I'm not quite sure where that particular piece that you're sharing came from. And it may be it predated me being in charge, so I will say that.
Well, that concerns me because this is connected to exactly what you're talking about. A quick Google search just took me down this rabbit hole and that's why.
A Google search of the instructional core?
Of, yes. So you just start looking at the information that you're disseminating to our instructional leaders, this fellowship theory of action and where it comes from. That's what I do as a sociologist, I look at systems and I look at systems of power. And so I look at the fellowship theory of action and where it's coming from and who it's coming from and when it originated and why it originated and who's profiting off of it. And that's what I'm finding. So it goes back to the Harvard Group, it goes to the, I mean, like I said, I'm just within the past five minutes, I've come up with four 501(c) threes that are out of town that are implicated in this. And what the, I don't want this to become a larger conversation. I'm just saying, that's, that's my point to you, these are my concerns. We don't need this in this district right now. What we need is something that's specific to Flint, that, and, and we can have a longer conversation, I'm not.
I, I welcome that, I will say.
But what I'm saying is I, like, I'm a professional, I'm, so I'm like talking in shorthand right now and I know that I'm glossing over a lot of things and I'm fully aware of that. And, you know, I've done 30 years in K through 12 education as it's linked to the university, right? And I've taught in it and I've studied it. And so I know what you're, exactly what you're talking about. And I'm not, what I'm saying to you, with all due respect, I'm not impressed with this program, especially at what it's costing. So I'm gonna need more convincing that there's value added to this program. And from what I'm hearing in the streets and from teachers who are actually undergoing this program, they don't like it. And it's not worthwhile. I, I don't appreciate the smirk.
I, I didn't smirk, I'm sorry.
You sort of smile a little bit and, and.
Hey, 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 come on now, come on.
I'm sorry.
Madam President, point of order.
Yeah, I'm calling order, come on, let's not, let's, let's receive the information, I mean.
I would want, I'd want basic, I mean, a reading list, like what's the, the.
Sure, I can absolutely provide that.
And the reason why I'm asking for it is because this hasn't convinced me is what it, so I'm not trying to be pedantic, I'm not trying to, this, what you've, what I've seen, what I've heard, what I've witnessed myself does not convince me. And so if you want to, at least to convince this board member, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to give me more.
So, um, I will say, in my experience with the fellowship here in Flint, is that participants always walk out feeling they have found value in each session. Many of them have articulated to me personally in our feedback forums that this is the best professional learning they've ever participated in.
That's a little bad, but.
Mr. Jones will articulate that himself, I've heard him say it. I've heard many, many of the principals say that, I've heard many of the teachers in the district say that. So that, that's kind of where I was kind of caught off guard by your comment. Uh, because everyone I've ever talked to really finds value in the program. I also invite you to join us on our Saturday session so that you can see for yourself, because you use the term witness, and I want you to witness this professional learning in action, if that's okay with you.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I invite all of you to do that. That invitation has been offered before to board members, excuse me?
When?
Yeah, when is that?
So, um, as I was trying to get to our slides, I'll, we'll, we'll get to that, thank you.
We'll allow Dr. Beverly to continue his, um, presentation. Let's hold our questions to the end and can you please write them down so we can move along, so we can get out of here tonight? All right, proceed, please.
So again, here's a, a, a sample, um, agenda from the, um, 2021, um, summer institute. There's, um, it's just a screenshot of the first, uh, few, um, few segments of that and I can provide the full agendas if you are interested. But again, the focus is, uh, aligned with district goals with a focus on literacy, building that professional community, um, cultural competence, um, and then that team-to-team sharing component that I discussed. I'm waiting for Mr. Gilbert to catch up. Take your time. Keep going, keep going.
Yeah.
There you go. So that's a sample agenda, um, from the 2021 Summer Institute, where there was a two-day session. Everything that we've done, uh, since the pandemic has been done virtually. We've been able to bring together participants online with us, um, on those Saturdays, as I mentioned. And we've been, uh, quite fortunate for their participation. Here's another example of, uh, of some of the outcomes, um, for a session. This is the March 6th session. Outcomes including, uh, developing, uh, a stronger sense of self-care. We had recognized, um, early on that educators were themselves struggling during the pandemic, right? And so how can we support them, um, in their use of self-reflection time, um, so that they can be, do some more mindfulness activities? There's, again, similar activities that they can replicate in their classroom. This piece particularly was, um, out of the Distance Learning Playbook, which is John Hattie's work. I don't know, board member McIntyre, if you're familiar with John Hattie? But, um, John Hattie's work, um, has informed a great deal of our work, um, both, um, well, particularly in the, uh, in the pandemic version of, uh, the fellowship, but it also will inform our work moving forward as his Distance Learning Playbook. The second version is kind of a returning back to school and we're using that resource to support educators. Much of that session, again, focused on, um, best practices, particularly around literacy and the literacy essentials, um, that are, uh, that's some work out of, uh, this is a collaboration between, um, University of Michigan and some faculty at MSU as well. I wanted to share, uh, some of the evaluations that we do after each session. This is looking at those very same, uh, outcomes that I listed on the other slide. Um, and think, and participants identified, you know, after attending this event, I can continue to develop ideas for taking care of myself. I can explore sections of model, of module eight to learn about feedback. Again, feedback has been a, a major component of our work. Exploring module nine, which is focused on, uh, reflections, um, and thinking about how to improve the learning experience for students. Um, and then recognizing though instructional best practices as they apply to, uh, the district's Marzano-focused model, the FCS pillars as identified by administration and other FCS programs. So as you can see, uh, the scores, um, based on, uh, that particular evaluation seem to be quite favorable for participants. Some additional feedback, um, again, this is directly from participants. What ideas from today's session will be most beneficial in your role as a member of your I L T? It reminded me that my role of the leader of, of the school is to provide vision and direction to our team. I can use these ideas to share out with staff that are not on the instructional leadership team and speak on their behalf. As an instructional leader, being able to relay the important elements and group vision that was shared to move all of our students forward and through these challenging days now and ahead of us. I love the time we spend with our building and then sharing our ideas with other schools. Ideas towards enhancing communication with both parents and students. And then we asked them, what suggestions do you have for us to improve your fellowship experience? I think you're all doing an awesome job of keeping us engaged during this distance learning. I just really appreciate the facilitation and being given the opportunity to work in our teams. Keep doing what you're doing, soliciting our input is valuable and we can see when you, when we attend these sessions. And then someone asked for, uh, more time to work with their school team. So the game plan for this upcoming year, uh, we will be meeting with district leaders on October 20th, uh, to, again, develop some of that alignment towards district goals and the upcoming sessions. Content that, uh, Mr. Jones has asked us to focus on thus far is, uh, implementation of MYKIP, which is a state-based reporting, uh, process and mechanisms. The literacy essentials, uh, which we have already, uh, engaged in in earlier years. A new data protocol called Data All the Time, um, which we co-developed with the district. And then coaching for instructional improvement. That first initial meeting on October 20th will be with the Office of Academics to, again, identify where there could be alignment and how to, how can they then also support the work of the fellowship in, in moving not just the instructional leader, leadership teams for it, but the schools as a whole. From there, we hope to, um, meet on November 20th, uh, to meet with the district leaders from the Office of Academics and to bring the principals into the conversation, uh, focusing again on, uh, MYKIP, Data All the Time, essential leader, literacy, but also incorporating the five dysfunction of the team, which I know is a, a major priority and area of focus for interim superintendent Jones. And then finally, uh, we will finalize these dates, uh, in that October 20th meeting with district leaders. We plan for a session in December, another session in January, February, March and April. Once we finalize those dates, I'll be more than happy to share them with you. Uh, either Monica will pass them off or, um, Mr. Jones will, um, and, and again, invite you to, uh, to participate. So that's the fellowship. I want to see if there are additional questions on the fellowship before moving forward on the second component of our work. It's still in the same packet.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move on. So, uh, through a grant from the, my foundation, we've been providing leadership coaching, um, for, uh, district leaders as well as, uh, school principals. So, uh, each of the school principals has a, has a coach from our team as well as, uh, many of the central administration folks. Look like you brought to ask them, please.
Yeah, and I, I hate to, I hate to make us go back, but it's fellowship-related. First, I wanted to thank you, Dr. Beverly, for coming in and presenting this information. But second, I wanted to just understand, you know, you always get asked the question like, how do you measure success of participants? I, I guess you can say success or effectiveness, right? Because I think it's great, the feedback that you receive, but I wonder, again, are you tracking? Or how do you track maybe, uh, the participants of the fellowship and maybe, uh, the techniques that were taught? And maybe classroom improvements? Are you monitoring that data to say, you know what, this program, not only is it, you know, great information, but again, also proves effectiveness within the classroom as we're looking at overall impact on students? And then I got a second one as well.
Sure, so what we do is we facilitate the instructional leadership teams to do that work, right? So their progress monitoring, the plans that they, that they make with us on those Saturday sessions and then we facilitate their progress monitoring over time throughout the year, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and then I think I, I read it here a little bit, so you've been in, this fellowship has been involved with our district since, is it 2017?
Uh, before that, 2014, I think was our first year.
So I asked that question, I understand, how has the pandemic changed your approach? Cause you read a lot about how just teaching overall has changed, right? Especially with a lot of time being spent in a virtual format. You talk about the evolution of technology and how that continues to come into the day-to-day, uh, process. So just under, want to understand again, is that something that you all lean on the district for? Or are there best practices around, again, uh, virtual learning environments? And how, again, as you're talking about techniques and how to reach the students, teachers can also go about that as well?
Sure, so there's two, two parallel answers to that question. The first answer is that the resource that I missed in the Distance Learning Playbook, we found that extremely valuable in supporting, uh, Flint teachers as they shifted from face-to-face to virtual learning, right? So that was the first resource. The second resource we're co-developing and should be out, uh, I want to say by the end of this month, I'm hoping, uh, which is, uh, we call it the COVID Keepers Document. So there have been a number of strategies that have been effective during the pandemic. Some students thrived during the pandemic, right? They didn't have to worry about getting teased at school, they didn't have to worry about being bullied, they didn't have to worry about, right? They're, so some students, not all students, some students did thrive. So how can we leverage those best practices through the pandemic to support those students when they return face-to-face, right? So those COVID Keepers is a resource that we're hoping to bring, uh, to, to the Flint folks here by the end of the month.
And is that, am I hearing you right in terms of that piece, just specifically focusing on the students who thrive and making sure that that's brought in? But I, of course, you know, with our, within our school districts, we definitely have students that thrive. I think so many did not thrive, right? So just want to make sure that we're, you know, go ahead, go ahead.
So, so the, the, a, a large port, like, we would have hoped that we could have started in August with this work, right? But because of, um, uh, the grant calendar, things just didn't work out that way. So we would have hoped to have started in August this work.
Sure.
Moving through September now and October and supporting that launch for the school year. But we hope to, um, once we do get started, to spend some, a great deal of attention on how are you tracking where students are and how are you identifying their needs and then how are you supporting those needs?
Thank you, thank you.
Certainly. So the second piece, as I mentioned, is, uh, through a grant from the Mott Foundation, um, which is leadership coaching. It includes data support. So our team, um, in all intents and purposes has been, uh, a significant aspect of the data work here in the district, um, in terms of, uh, DIBELS and, I'll, I'll get to that here shortly. But also, uh, support for the strategic planning process that occurred, uh, last year that I know, um, was paused. So here are, um, a number of interactions. And so we track interactions between our coaches and, uh, district staff, whether it's central office staff, whether it's principals. And so you can see from March of, uh, 21 through July of 21, uh, there were 224 interactions between MSU teams and, uh, and district staff focusing on leadership and coaching. Another 58 focused specifically on, uh, that, uh, district strategic plan. Here are some of those, uh, interactions broken down into subcategories. So general coaching represented 196. Data and capacity building focus were 98 of those interactions. Supporting leadership teams, planning for other school meetings and then supporting principals and delivering professional development. And then obviously, we weren't doing walkthroughs in, in March because there was nowhere to walkthrough. Okay, so that's why there's a zero. The work of the data team, uh, includes capacity, uh, support for principals and staff and using student achievement and attendance data. Analyzing student data, supporting district administrators and, uh, their use of data. Assisting with virtual classroom preparation around assessments. And then, uh, early on in the pandemic, the district was required to do a continuity of learning plan. And so we were supported, uh, Mr. Jones at the time in analyzing data to, to inform that continuity of learning plan. And then the strategic planning process, uh, with, uh, at the, at the time Superintendent Stewart, helping to facilitate some of those, uh, committee meetings, um, subgroups, uh, that, uh, were presented, um, earlier. And I'm happy to dive in to that for, uh, for any more member, but particularly, uh, the newer board members, if they're interested in that space. And we're happy to continue engaging in that con- conversation if possible.
Can I just, what do you, strategic plan, what strategic plan?
So there was, uh, some strategic planning that was occurring, uh, from the fall through the winter, uh, but was paused.
By whom?
By the board. I'm looking at Monica.
Nope.
She never brought it back to the board, okay.
So you're saying that the superintendent.
We, we handed it to the superintendent, I will tell you that, and I don't know what happened to it after that.
So what, what did you hand to the superintendent?
A finalized plan, we helped facilitate the plan, we helped to.
Oh, I was, what, what did he, what, I asked him what he handed to the superintendent and did we see it?
I don't recall seeing anything that.
She never passed it forward, okay. She never passed it forward, okay.
Madam Chair, point of information.
Yes.
Which superintendent are we talking about?
Superintendent Stewart.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Are you, you're not done, are you? Continue, did you have a question, Chris? Mr. Delmarong?
I am done, I was on my last slide. This is thank you and questions. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take the finished questions.
Mr. Delmarong?
My question, so on the agenda tonight, it says Michigan.
We can't hear you, Chris, in the mic.
So on the agenda tonight, it says Michigan State University, you've come before us, you've presented this. Are we taking some action tonight? Do we know a cost? Or, let me ask, what is the purpose of this presentation?
What the situation was is, this has been voted on, but, but the situation was Ms. Laura didn't have all the information that she felt was necessary, even though they had pitched an awesome program, it wasn't in-depth. So she requested, we requested for them to come before the board, give us a breakdown of exactly what it was that they were offering up to us. So that's what tonight was supposed to be about.
Very good, thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members?
So what I did request at the last meeting was you had a couple, four, you had four pages that you presented to us, requesting an amount of $500,000 for six virtual learning sessions. And what I wanted was a breakdown of what was entailed in the virtual learning sessions. And outside of that, like what, like beyond four pages, so I'm not.
So we, what we proposed was not virtual, what we proposed was in-person.
Did it say that? I.
Well, we're in, in-person learning, so I would think that it would be in-person.
I'm specifically talking about, I'd have to go back and look at the four pages. That's what it, that's, to my recollection, and I don't have it with me right now.
And I can't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. McHale?
Point of information to Board McIntyre, could we just write down what it is? And so we're having it written, and you can get it over to him and answer the question? Because you asked him to come from memory, I don't think he even know what we're talking about.
Well, I asked for, I just asked for a breakdown of what the, the sessions would entail, whether they're virtual or in-person. And that's, that's what I asked for at the last meeting. I didn't vote for it. So the onus is on you presenting the information and selling it to us. That's, that was my assumption, because we voted it down.
Did we vote it down?
No, we didn't, but we didn't vote to bring it to the, we voted to postpone it, so.
I think we.
It passed?
Yeah, we have a decision.
You was, has some concerns, but it passed.
Oh, I don't remember that either, so.
Yeah, that's why we said we need to take notes.
I mean, I do, I do want.
I do have notes, I just don't have it with me right now.
I do want to, I do want your questions to be answered. So when you say a breakdown of each session, what does that look like to you in terms of the types of information you're looking for, so that I can support that?
The four pages that you provided.
Were an overview, yeah. That was an overview.
Yeah, the overview, like, do you have anything that was more of an, more than an overview? Because what it was, it was like $500,000 for six sessions, and that just seemed excessive. And I wanted to know what was involved with that price tag.
Can I?
Please.
May I speak? So, so the work that is happening with the fellowship is work as we are preparing, as we are working with teachers, as we are working with administrators. So for Dr. Beverly to be able, in my opinion, and the work that I know, to give, to tell you what the last session is going to be, is, is impossible because we use data as we go. So what he's presented to you tonight was actually the work that we do. That is the work that we do. To tell you exactly what the last session would be would, would not be fair to the work we're doing with our scholars and teachers. So it's an ongoing work, and that's why the work comes from the district and the data that we're, that's driving the work, that's happening now. So I don't know if he's, you will not be able to, in my opinion, give Board Member McIntyre that information, but the overview is basically telling you how, how this will look in the, in the overall, overall view of it. But to tell you exactly what's going to happen each session, that's what we're, that's what we're working on based on the data we have. We have baseline data from NWEA, baseline data from DIBELS, baseline data from the assessments that teachers are doing, and we're working with principals and teachers now to determine what that would look like. That's why the first session is with the Office of Academics and myself. Second session is with the Office of Academics, curriculum team, and principals. And so that drives, based on what's going on in the buildings, that drives the sessions as we move forward. And that's, that's why it's the fellowship.
And those conversations are ongoing throughout the entire cycle, right? And so we're circling back to administration and principals and teachers for their input on what the subsequent session would look like. So I couldn't necessarily hand you the agenda for the December session, because we're still in conversation on what that would look like.
So these are tailor-made programs?
No, not at all.
When I say tailor-made, I mean, you have the research and, and the stuff available, but it depends on the necessity of the principals and.
Oh, customized, that's, absolutely.
Okay, well, tailor-made, customized.
Yes, ma'am, yes, you're right, my apologies.
That's okay, no.
Customized, so absolutely, right? So we incorporate the district's needs, right? We incorporate each school's needs, and informs each of those game plans for each session. We have some overarching goals that we like to accomplish, and those are what I shared so far today. But what each session will look like is definitely customized.
And so you're taking these skills and rerouting them to this goal? You, you already know where, well, they already know, we already know where we're trying to get, but you don't know which process you're going to implement to get there? Is that what I'm hearing?
So thinking about what would be most effective for the context, right? So we haven't been in the district since school started, right? So I don't know necessarily where the priorities are, right? In terms of student needs? I don't, I mean, I can surmise, right? I got an educated guess, right? But I want to incorporate that into the planning for how we move forward, for sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. I might have jumped in front of somebody. Mr. Pastor Gilbert?
Madam President to Dr. Beverly, I've listened very intently, and it's, it's kind of put me over in the weeds a little bit.
I understand.
And what I want to know is, I listened to Superintendent Jones, and what he said is, what is the measurement? What is the bar? What is the result? What is the outcome? Even though you got to go down the road.
Sure.
But it just seems to me that the children and the district has suffered to meet the bar, whatever that might be, in the, in the past.
Sure.
So it seems to be, to, to me, that there has to be a way within that program that can reveal as you go that there is some tweaks that's got to be made, or there has to be in your program some improvement, or something's working, or something's not working. And I'd, I haven't heard that. And I think that Sister McIntyre, that's what her, one of her main concerns. And for me, programs are wonderful, Dr. Beverly, and I'm sure that you are exceptional in your field. But I want to know what worked, what is working, why it is working, and what needs to be taken out, what needs to be added, and it goes back to what Sister Superintendent Jones said. Will you be able, or have you in the past come before? I heard Sister McIntyre talk about what she asks for. It's critical that, going forward, that you or your program, if it's going to continue, and the board has the authority in some fashion to, either to accept, to adopt, or to reject it, is that, I, I just want to know what, what, what is successful? What is working? Whether it's the principals, or the students, or whoever the coaches are? I, I want to know how we got from here to there, and what worked, and what didn't.
Sure. So I will say, the most reliable data we have is the 2018-2019 data, right? It wasn't any data that was connected to the pandemic, right? 1920, none of the state assessments were even given, many of the NWA assessments weren't delivered, right? So the 1819 school year, in our mind, is the most reliable data. What we found in 2018-19 was some significant decreases in out-of-school suspensions for Black students, right? That was tied to some of our work around cultural competency through the fellowship. That was tied to some of our work in facilitating capturing kids' hearts, right? That was tied to some of our work in supporting administration and making some shifts and some tweaks to the district code of conduct. And I believe we first met during that initial process, right? And so like, all of those pieces that we touched, at some point, came together and had a significant impact on that one particular data point. It's not the only data point, not the, right? There are many others that we need to address, but that is a pretty important one, right? We also found in 2018-19, there were some encouraging student assessment results for the lower grades around the DIBELS assessment. That's the, the literacy assessment for kindergarten, first grade, second and third grade, right? There were some cohorts that were finally, we've been doing this for several years, that were finally showing some upticks. Now, will that data be, hold true for 21-22? It's hard to say. We also have the pandemic in there, I'm not trying to make an excuse, just talk in reality, right? So what I would love to see is, you know, a year from now to, again, let's look at some of that data and see where we are, see where the needs are, and see what, where we can improve based on some reliable data, because right now, we just literally don't have any, right? There's no behavior data to, to stand on, because students hadn't been in school, right, for almost a full year. What will August to December look like behavior-wise, right? And then, working with us, what does January to June look like, right? I think that those are some potential milestones to look at.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Are there any more questions from the board? Okay, thank you so much.
I really appreciate the time, and like I said, as a former board member, I know the job is definitely not easy. But I do appreciate each, each of you's attentiveness and, and willingness to, to take critical looks at, at everything, because it is important to do it in that way. So thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly, thank you.
Okay, back to this, we ain't seen. Please continue, Mr. Jones, and introduce us to your next guest.
This guy is actually not a guest. Mr. Madur is just going to give us some updates about the work that's going on at Doyle Rider. Just want to keep the board in the loop of what you all approved, and so this should not take very long at all. This should not take very long at all. Thank you, sir. But I just want the board, but if the board desires to ask questions, absolutely do so. But I wanted Mr. Madur, who is our interim operations director, to give some insight on what's going on at Doyle Rider. Thank you, Mr. Madur.
Good evening, thanks for inviting me. President McIntosh and the rest of the distinguished board, I am pleased to finally meet you. And as one of the several projects that has been directed my way by interim Superintendent Kevlin Jones, Doyle Rider, which is a, a school that has been in need of a roof for many, many years, is currently making great progress with the leadership of Trimco and, and their group. And since the project started a few weeks back, roofing crews have been working diligently with the weather events that have been haunting us over the last several months. The heavy-duty architectural shingles that they're putting on look great, and I assure you, they will last for decades. Andy's Roofing is the contractor, doing the work, and they have been doing a good job dealing with all the elements and, and, which is a very difficult roof to work, and using heavy-duty equipment and, and top-of-line materials, it's, it's a, it's going to end up to be an outstanding project.
Are there any questions from the board? I'm looking at this number two picture, sir. Is that the finished product?
I referred to this, that is the, that's side of the building, and that's been torn off at that point? This, this picture here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And so they have not yet put the ice and water shield down, which is the underlayment, which is actually an adhesive membrane that they roll out.
All right, let me tell you exactly what it is. Moisture can't go through one side of it, but it can go through the other side, but it stops the, the moisture, the brain from coming in on the, any supposed to breathe, have a layer of light skin even.
But it's, it's the premium product under any type of shingle roof. And that, the entire body of that roof has that ice and water shield on it, underneath the shingle, so it, it's the, it's the ultimate roof system for, for asphalt shingles.
So these are asphalt shingles? Most of them are the ones.
Yes. But they are a heavy-duty architectural shingle, and they will withstand the heavy winds and the heavy weather that we receive here in Michigan. It should last for decades.
Okay. When you guys were up there, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to those people that did the work, but when you were up there, did you see any other areas that looked concerning in the near future for you, for us?
They, yeah, they were instructed to repair any, any damaged roof boards as they were doing the tear-off. And they did, as they, as they went along, to ensure that the longevity of that roof system. And most of it was from the exposure from those shingles that had been blown off years ago. So some of it was pretty obvious, but as you do a tear-off, you have to have the material readily available so that they can do the repair as needed.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board members?
What's, what's the estimated date of completion of the, of the roof?
What about?
The estimated date of completion?
Well, they're about 60% completed.
Sixteen or sixty?
Sixty, I'm sorry. And they're gonna, the next three days, the weather looks bad.
Yeah.
But I believe starting next week, we got a run of some, of fair weather, they, they should be finishing up here within the next week or so.
Okay, the only reason I ask is because of, and I hate, I, I hope that this doesn't happen, but we know sometimes on Halloween, it could start snowing, right? We're in Michigan. So just trying to think about that, as, as you said again, the, the weather. You mentioned the weather, and we have a forecast. Thank you.
So, so the, the asphalt restoration part should be done within the next few weeks, and that will trigger then the staging of the tuck-in pointing of the masonry work, which is the, the brick work on the dormers that are up on that roof. That will begin, and at about that time, they will also start the flat roof portion of this project. And so it's, there's still a lot of work to be done, but the hardest part was that the high, the high part of the restoration and the asphalt shingle, so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from any other board members? Seeing there is none, thank you so much, sir, for your time. Mr. Kaplan, back to you.
Okay.
Yep, just give, just quickly, we did do, you did do a walkthrough with Trimco as it pertains to the inside of the building?
Yes.
And that is a part of the renovations that board you approved. Um, and that is a part of the renovations that board you approved. However, this was just a walkthrough to get, um, some architectural work going. So I just want you to update the board real quick and if they have any questions.
Yesterday morning, thank you. Yesterday morning, Trimco's Dustin Fremian, which you've met, and his construction manager, Vincent Cipriana, uh, we conducted a walkthrough of the interior Doyle Rider, uh, at the direction, uh, direction of Mr. Jones and started the process of developing a plan, uh, to bring to the board as soon as possible. And that basically involved the, uh, the building of walls, uh, and the interior of the building, which currently is an open floor plan, which is, uh, which really is not, uh, a good atmosphere for, uh, for the students. And over the years, uh, they've literally barricaded the classrooms with cabinets and, and, uh, portable wall units and, uh, so this is gonna resolve that problem and, uh, and turn it into a, uh, a much more feasible environment for these students. And that includes, uh, all new flooring, uh, that includes, uh, metal studs and drywall up through the ceiling. So you're gonna have the, uh, the soundproofness, uh, for the, uh, for each room to be private, uh, upgrade and, and some lighting. And we're also addressing, uh, the HVAC issues that will, uh, issues that will be, uh, brought in by starting to, uh, uh, creating the wall, uh, system. But, uh, we got, I believe, the right, uh, group with Trimco and, uh, and, uh, his construction manager, and they actually have, uh, brought a, uh, architect. They had a, a meeting with a architect today to, uh, to start going over some of the, the plans. So, uh, within, uh, hopefully a short period of time, we'll be bringing that back to the board, uh, for some updates and, uh, for approvals.
And is Trimco handling all of that? How does?
Say it again.
Is Trimco handling, handling all of that? Is he?
So, so I'm glad you asked that. So in order for us to be able to have some baseline data on what this will look like, we have to start somewhere. So we have to start with someone being able to come in and, and since we've trusted Trimco with our work that we're doing with the roofing, we've, we've asked them to come in and, and give us some estimate work so we can bring back to the board. And then we can RFP it out and then get more bids on the work that needs to be done.
Sounds smart, Mr. Kaplan. I like it. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Trimco is an excellent resource and the one, the advantage of that, having a, a larger, uh, company like that, is they have the control of the subcontractors. And right now, having the control of subcontractors is huge because the industry is, uh, very busy. Uh, after the COVID, everything was dormant and now the activity and the money is flowing into, uh, construction and Trimco will be a great resource for Flint schools.
Yeah, no supplies that went through the roof since COVID, oh my God.
Thank you, Mr. Madur.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Pastor Gilbert, were you gonna say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you so much, uh, what was it, Mr.?
Mr. Madur.
Mr. Madur, thank you. Go ahead.
So, uh, the classroom, are they gonna be closed in? Are they gonna still be open with just ceilings all the way? Are they gonna close in and they're gonna have doors?
So they're gonna have, they're gonna have doors based on, based on what you all told me, hey, when you voted, that's what we do. So we're gonna have doors, walls going all the way up to the ceiling, but we wanted to make sure that that could happen because the way the building was built, it wasn't built with that wall. So that's why we wanted a company to come in that we've already been trusting to, to give us some type of anticipation of what this will look like. And so we'll take that and we'll do bids from there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I did have a question.
Please proceed, Pastor Gilbert.
That, so when you're doing this, what Dr. McNeil is talking about, how do you, uh, deal with the students or where do they, what do they do? I mean, where do they go?
Good question.
How are they safe or how they, stuff is stirred up, things are moving? How are they protected? I guess is the question.
As it pertains to the renovations?
Yes.
Okay. So currently Doyle Rider scholars are, have, they're at Potter due to the mold, uh, incident that we had. So they're at Potter, uh, they're at the whole school. You have two schools sharing Potter at this time. Doyle Rider is in one wing and Potter is in another wing. And so the hope, the hope pastor, is to handle, the board's pleasure was to, not only are we gonna fix the mold problem, but let's go ahead and try to get some renovations done. So when our scholars and our families return to Doyle Rider, they can come into a renovated building. And so the goal is to get this done by the end of the school year so that our scholars and our families can walk into Doyle Rider into a renovated building. And so prelimin, preliminarily, we've talked to Trimco and they saying it's tight, but they're gonna try to do their very best and get this information to us so we can bid it out.
So is Trimco, are they, are they, are they a company in Michigan and Flint or Genesee County? What?
So Trimco is the company that's actually doing our roofing.
Oh.
They, they have, uh, they have companies under them that they work with contractors that they work with and they get contractors to come in to actually do the work.
So who is Shane Roofing?
That's the, that's a contractor under Trimco that's doing our roofing right now.
I got you.
And so they have a contractor coming in to support the work and renovations that we want to happen in the building, but they're not gonna necessarily be the ones that win the bid.
I see. Okay.
So we just need a baseline so we can get the, the work moving. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Seeing there is none. We're not voting on that, so here we, no. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to, um, Ms. Georgina.
Johnson Controls.
Oh, yep, 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 that's what I said, but is it? Okay, so next we have Johnson Controls coming for us to, um, speak to us about our heating and cooling piece. So let's re, prepare to receive them.
Madam President, the heating and cooling, is this in a particular, uh, school building? Is that, or is it just all of the school building? Okay.
Good evening.
Can I bring some clarity to why they're here? So board members, I would like to bring some clarity to why we've asked, uh, Johnson Controls to be here. Uh, there was some questions about the work that, that has already been approved from the board. Uh, this was previous to, uh, some of our board members being on. They've been working on this project, uh, for our HVAC systems for a while, even when I was principal at Doyle Rider, they had been working with the district for a while, uh, to improve our HVAC systems and make sure that there's air in our buildings. And so there was questions about some of the work over the last week or so. And so I've asked Johnson Controls to come to clarify and to bring some clarity to the work that's happening and also answer any questions that our board members have. So that's why Johnson Controls is here today.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I just may add before they, so the board had questions prior to them coming today?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So we expect for them to give us an answer to those questions. Is, is that what the board expects? Because I wasn't here, I wasn't a member of the board. So I just wanna be able to understand that, that along with their presentation, they will be answering the questions that board members had presented about Johnson Controls and their work.
Yes, sir. There was, there was questions about some of the work that is actually being done and how it's being done.
Okay.
Uh, and so in order to cancel out all of the questions, bring them to the board and allow the board to ask any questions that they may have, but allow also for Johnson Controls to explain the work and the history of the work that was approved by board members.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Jones.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, Madam President, members of the board. Welcome to the new faces, by the way. So I think what I'll do is, sorry, I'm a little taller. What I'll do is give a little background as to how this contract came to be and how it's maybe different than other contracts that you've had. So, uh, back in 2000, late 2018, superintendent had, um, come up with an idea to use performance based contracting to get this work done, which basically means that you're, um, we as a contractor are designing a project that upgrades your aging infrastructure, but focuses on energy savings and then uses those energy savings to actually fund the project, um, which is a do different because you, as a school district, you've talked about the, the deficit and so you didn't have funding to put into your HVAC programs. And you'll see by some of the pictures that we're gonna show that, uh, the deferred maintenance had piled up quite high in the systems that were providing the environment, the learning environment for your students was, was inadequate. Um, I've brought Michael Weffering along with me. My name is Dan Mack. Uh, Mike is our, um, lead on our mechanical, um, systems. He's had dozens of people out here at any given time, um, working on, on almost all of your buildings. The, the one building that, well, this building wasn't, is part of our scope, but, um, Southwestern was also not part of our scope, which you'll see here in a moment. So, so we were selected through a competitive bidding process to develop this project and to execute it. And so, um, let's see if I can make this work. So this is a re, review of the capital improvements. This is a little bit of an eye chart, but it, it, it kinda takes a very comprehensive project and boils it down into one chart. The schools at the top, uh, or buildings at the top, because the administration building is also part of this, um, were what was in the scope. And then on the side, you'll see that the project was actually put into two phases. The first phase was funded through energy and operational savings. The second phase, um, the superintendent was trying to get funding for air conditioning from the state of Michigan. And so that piece was, was paused until funding could be secured. So what we did do, um, and, and mind you, this is during the pandemic, Mike's guys, you know, we had control of the, of the resources because they're our resources and we were able to, um, to get this done. Actually, um, before last winter, we got the new boilers in at, um, I believe every one of the buildings except for admin, we put boilers in. Uh, and Northwestern. And we put in a new control system in each one of these buildings and we'll so, we'll show you pictures of the before and after, um, to kinda give you a context of, of what was done. But we were able to get the controls and the boilers in before winter started last year. So those of you that have been here a while, I'm sure that you had complaints prior to last year about rooms being very hot in the wintertime. We put loggers out and some of the built, some of the rooms were 85, 90 degrees in the wintertime. And these are classrooms. These are, this is the learning environment. In last year, you know, they were 70 degrees. And so, um, we also put cooling in Neither Cut as part of Phase One. So this summer, Neither Cut had air conditioning. And, and just to put this into context, the, the funding was never received from the state, so we ended up scrambling as a team to cut out some of the, so the lighting, we didn't do lighting in the buildings. We saved that funding to help fund the air conditioning. Um, the district was able to, to come up with some sinking fund dollars. So our original contract was cut by $4 million and we were able to, to readjust some of the scope items to make the air conditioning kinda at the top of the list. Um, and, and so you have one change order through this contract and that was to take that deduct and get air conditioning in the buildings. And that was supposed to be done by December of this year. Well, unfortunately, we had a very hot summer and the buildings that didn't have air conditioning, um, it was a very unfortunate learning environment for those students. But next year, through, uh, the work that Mike is doing, they should have air conditioning. They will have air conditioning. Thanks, Mike.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, are you still go, I'm sorry?
I, I've got other slides. Go ahead and ask a question.
No, no, you go ahead. I'll wait till you're, you're done.
Okay.
I want to just say this, we're gonna need a copy of your slide so we can see that because it's very difficult to read and analyze.
I'll, I'll email that to Monica, to you? Okay. I'll email that, email this to Monica. So, so Phase Two, now we're, we're doing, um, the air conditioning. And I'm gonna have Mike go through some of these before and after pictures to show the work that has been done and then Mike will go through the air conditioning work that we're doing now.
So this right here is a picture of the, um, previous energy management system prior to Johnson Controls beginning the work out there. Uh, most of this system was well beyond its useful life expectancy and a lot of it was not even operational, uh, when we started our work. This is an example of, um, this is the same building, same school. So this is what the energy management system looks like in there currently right now.
What school? What school is this?
I don't know off the top of my head. Dan, do you know which picture that came from?
No, they're, they're all very similar in, in terms of what they had before and, and this is an example of, I, I can get that, sorry. I can get that to you if you'd like. We do have, um, the mechanical systems by building, so I apologize if this was just an example rather than have you go, show you 10 different buildings of the same thing. We just put this one as an example, but I'll get you what that is, which building that is.
Yeah, so we're gonna go through a couple of the mechanical systems and then it's the same way. We don't have the names on the, the schools, but you know, Dan will get all that information to you. So this is the temperatures in the classrooms before we began the work. And this is in the wintertime was, they were run between 80 and 85 degrees. Now, we had trend loggers in there, so we knew where we were before we started. Okay, now with the new building automation system, we're actually trending the temperatures on a daily basis in all the classrooms. So we can see that we're, we're holding pretty much between 68 to 72 degrees in the classrooms, depending on where the teachers may have their set points.
What is this? Like, is this a week or something like?
That is, yes, it's close to a week. It's, um, it looks like a two week period of time.
And the after classrooms, that's what you projected? That your work is going to do? So it's not anything that?
That's correct.
Is existing at this point?
Right. So when we did the work and when we were putting the project together, you know, um, we stated that we'd be able to in the wintertime, uh, you know, maintain the classrooms between 68 and 72 degrees. And then contractually for the savings, uh, you know, our set point is definitely about 72 degrees, but it can go above if the teachers wanna raise it higher than that on the set points. But that's what we're maintaining right now is between 68 and 72.
In the winter?
In the wintertime, correct. So these are, uh, pictures of one of those schools on what the mechanical systems, this is one of the air, or, or a couple of the air handlers in one of the schools on what it looked like before we had started our work. Uh, and this unit right here was pretty much non-functional. Um, you can see that the belts are off, panels are off, um, you know, dampers aren't hooked up or connected. Top right hand, uh, picture is actually the picture of one of the heating coils in one of the units.
So do you have before and after pictures for each school that you worked on?
For every, for every school that we worked on, on all the mechanical stuff, we have before and after pictures on everything. Yes, sir.
Is that asbestos wrapping in the lower right hand corner?
Uh, no. So we had, um, prior to us doing anything, we worked with the district, um, on your asbestos testing that you had done. Anything that was questionable when, before we started our work, the district retested. And then anything that came back positive that showed it, um, it was all, uh, abated by the district and we kinda marked the demarcation points of where we needed from this point to this point, um, to have abated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, yep, so, so that was all at Northwestern High School. So you can see what the units looked like after, um, So, yep. So, so that was all at Northwestern High School. So you can see what the units looked like after, um, we completed the work and that's at Northwestern.
The pictures on the right are typically the before and then, the pointer doesn't work on a monitor like this.
On the left, the ones on the left.
The ones on the left are before, the ones on the right are after.
These are your before and these are your after.
Can you talk about what you did to the air handling units?
So, whoop, we're catching up now. So, yeah. So one of the biggest parts of the contract, um, was we basically, in lieu of replacing air handlers due to the cost, we, we went and refurbished it. And essentially, um, we replaced chilled water coils, steam coils if they were leaking. We put in new fans, new bearings, new shafts, cleaned, um, the inside of all the units, sanitized the inside of the unit, replaced ductwork as needed, replaced insulation as was needed, changed out all the drain pans, cleaned up the piping, um, fixed chilled water valves or replaced chilled water valves, hot water valves, um, outside air dampers, returned air dampers. So basically, you got a new unit without the investment or the cost of what a new unit would have cost, um, for you. And then, um,
So this is Northwestern. Is this for the kitchen area?
Yes, that's right above the kitchen area. This is Doyle Rider. Again, the before and afters on Doyle Rider. Freeman.
She put the light button.
I know. It's gotta be smarter than the Brownell.
And this is the work that was done when Mr. Lopez was here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Eisenhower. Neither Cut.
Pierce.
Yep. Potter.
Talk about the filter racks.
So, um, most of the units, when, um, we went in on them, their filter racks had been, um, removed and there's basically no filtration on any of the units. So we wound up, um, rebuilding and adding filter racks to all of the units. And then some of them, you know, because the equipment is somewhat older, the accessibility to even get in there and replace the filters made it difficult. So that's why in some of them, you can see on the bottom right, you know, we put external filter rack on that, whereas the old one was up underneath and made it very difficult to, to get to. Um, and then the, uh, the top right, excuse me. And then on the bottom right, we had a filter rack to the top of that unit to make it easier to get to and, and more accessible. And then all filters, um, were a minimum of MERV nine or MERV eleven. I, I, I can't remember on that. So this is, uh, Doyle Rider and, uh, to the left is the old boilers. Um, that is the new boiler that was put in. And then with that, um, those are all the new starters and VFDs for the, uh, heating hot water pumps at Doyle Rider. And then again, if you look at the boilers at Freeman, those are the old boilers that were in at Freeman on the bottom left. Bottom right are the new boilers. And then when you're looking up on the top left is all the circulating pumps and the new pumps that were installed. I know a lot of people don't get excited about mechanic rooms. I do. And this is Pierce. So at Pierce, we did leave, um, one old boiler in there and that boiler is strictly for emergency, um, use in case something happens. And that was the best boiler of the three that were in there. And this is Potter. Again, on the left are the old boilers and then the right, the new boilers, along with all the, um, pumps, uh, the starters for them and VFDs. So one of the questions that came up, and I think that, that prompted this was, we were in the middle of installing the air conditioning at Brownell Elementary. And because all of the condensing units, which are the outside units that you see in your house, um, are being mounted on the ground, our, our piping is being run internal, um, in the building and exposed. And that's going to be the same at, um, Pierce, Potter and Freeman. So now at Pierce, Potter and Freeman, you basically have a, a ten-foot ceiling, um, that's almost like a precast ceiling that has, um, square tiles that are stuck to the ceiling. They're just basically glued on there for, for aesthetic reasons. There's no drop ceiling in either of those schools. So these, so we have some pictures that show, you know, this is, um, how some of this is exposed right now in, in these classroom, or in this, these schools right here.
Excuse me. I, I would like to say this because, and I hate to interrupt you, but because this is what stemmed the situation as to why they are here. My thought was this, as a board member, and I'm only one board member, there are six other board members. But to install that hanging down, A is an eyesore. I think the board should have been given the option to decide if we wanted to just get all new ceiling tiles and get the kind of ceiling that would accommodate, um, hiding the pipes versus you guys not bringing it before the board and just determining that you're gonna drop all that ugly piping hanging down visible. And I know you said that you were gonna cover it, but if there was an other option, we should have been given the opportunity to maybe decide because it is, I want to be honest, it's terrible looking to me at this point. Maybe they're gonna make it nice. But at this point, it's a disgrace.
What's that, ma'am?
What type of cover are you gonna put on? What are you talking about?
Uh, we, we actually did bring a mock-up of something that, but, but if you wouldn't mind, we'll, we'll get to the pictures that you're talking about, ma'am. When we worked through developing this project, this was before COVID. And so with the funding that we had, it was strictly funding through the energy savings. So there was a very limited budget. And we worked with the administration, uh, which was what we were directed to do directly with the administration, which is typical for working with school districts for a contractor. These were the directions, you know, we, we provided options. We couldn't go on the roof because the roofs were in terrible shape. They needed to be replaced and they were gonna be replaced in subsequent years. So we couldn't put all the piping on the roof because they need to have to tear it all off to, to replace it. Uh, so the decision was made to put it in the classrooms in some of these buildings. Neither Cut was able to put on the roof because it's a little bit different roof. But the administration knew, um, of the shape the ceilings were in, but didn't have money, extra money. This was before any of the, the COVID funding. Uh, so there was just no money. And so that's what was decided by the administration.
So you're saying it was decided. So who decided?
So that was during, um, Mr. Lopez's administration.
And see, what concerns me is this work was not done in time for the summer. So I don't see what the big hurry now, after we've sent kids home because it was hot. And now all of a sudden it's getting winter and now it's the big rush. We gotta get it in and I just don't see what the big hurry was and why the board couldn't have been given the option because Lopez is not here. And I think you know that we have S R funds. So for us to end up with this slop job, like, oh, well, when we talked about it, you didn't have money, but you knew we had money now. And you didn't give us the option to say, now that we have money, we want something nice and decent for our students because like I said, you're buying material to cover all that mess. So we could have just bought tiles for the ceiling. I mean, the option should have been offered because you do know that our financial situation has changed and it, and it's just that simple. I think that, um, you have a timeframe, like somebody stated, it has to be done by December of twenty twenty-one. I think somebody maybe didn't want to miss those funds and didn't want to be held up. Um, because the statement was made to a member of the administration that they were told to put lipstick on a pig. That's what infuriated me. And to put a wig on a horse. And that's just what it looked like. You didn't slap some lipstick on a pig and smack that mess up there. You know, a rush job. Now this is what your people told the administration in that building, which is what prompted this outrage with me. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna own it. That's why I was so upset. Because when I get a call from members in our district saying people are in our buildings, one, working while students are in there, because I don't think you're supposed to be doing that. Then number two, your people didn't check in at the office. If you don't work there and you're not a student there, when you hit our buildings, I don't care who you are. You walk into that office and let them know you're in our buildings working. Now, I don't know if you signed in or what, but you're in there working. You're not just coming in and gonna go to the office or go to a classroom. You're in there, you're adults during business hours, working on our buildings, talking about slapping lipsticks on pigs and wigs on horses. Nobody checked in at the office. So the administration came out and spoke to your people. That's how this pig in a wig and all these statements were made because they were interacting with them. So now they're already looking at this mess hanging on down out the ceiling and somebody's talking about lipsticks and pigs. Then, like I said, you, I was told, because I wasn't there, that you didn't check in with the office. And while I was there, I was waiting on one of you gentlemen to come. Well, you must've came in the back door because I was at the front door waiting. I don't know if I was so upset I missed you. I don't think so though. So does that mean you were coming in and out of two doors? And some of you guys have box trucks. Now, it's just me, maybe I'm a phobe, but for me, and I'm not even a parent. If I was a parent, I would be livid because you're in there with a box truck, you use them more than one though. We don't know who you got in here, how many you got in here. There's little kids in here. Uh, human trafficking is at an all-time high. Plus not to mention other liabilities. And the administration didn't know you were, nobody knew. You know, they didn't know what was going on. Now, Ms., um, Bias said that she was aware that you guys were supposed to be doing some work in the building, but Ms. Bias wasn't there. So if something happens, Ms. Bias is not under the gun. Cause the first thing Ms. Bias gonna say is what? I wasn't there. That puts her off the hook. See what I'm saying? But that don't put us off the hook for liability. So my thought would be, I don't care who it is, when a third-party contractor comes in our building, you check in with that office. If you got nine people on site or twelve people on site, we need to know that. Because if you're in there while our students are there, have they been vetted? Are they pedophiles? We don't know. See, we have a, a lot of liability to carry because we're caring for people's children. It's just business as usual to, to you. But no, these are people's lives, little kids' lives. Check in with the office. I want to know how many people you got in the building. And when you leave, check out. Let them know you're gone. We need to know. Because it could be just a strange man. You got open, open active shootings going on now? We need to be able to identify who is in our buildings at all times. So just with the comments that were made, the way the things were handled, the total disregard for us. I was livid. Yeah, it's a disregard when you come into an elementary school and you have grown people working and we don't know that you're in there and you didn't talk to somebody.
I would completely disagree. I, I agree with what you're saying. We should. I, I'm actually surprised that it's come up that they haven't checked in and checked out. We've been working there for like two years now and it's the first I've heard of this.
Well, this was this particular day when the principal wasn't there. And the administrator that was in charge is the one who called and told me about the situations and that they didn't know you was in the building. That's why they asked what was going on and the person responded to her. They were told to just put some lipstick on a pig. So this is how this all kicked off.
We, we will address that. I'm very concerned that that happened because
Yes, me too. And I would like for you guys to do your work after hours, actually. That, I think that would be more appropriate. Isn't that how it's supposed to go? Isn't that the?
I believe we are doing it after hours, ma'am.
No, this was during school hours when I was up there, wasn't it?
What time was it?
No, it was, um, after five because I was up there.
Oh, no, 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 no. I got out the bed. This was about ten o'clock in the afternoon because I called Mr. Kaplan. This wasn't no after five.
No, it was, it was in the evening and I could actually pull my phone log to show the
And when you were talking to
When I was talking, yeah, it was in the evening time. It was last, uh, Wednesday as a matter of fact. Because I was up in Flint last Wednesday. It was Wednesday evening.
I know for a fact it wasn't the evening because they called and woke me up out of bed and I worked first shift. That's number one.
Point of information, it was, uh, the time, around the time President McIntosh sat because all of us got these calls around the same time. And it was in the AM, uh, part of the morning. Uh, but I'd like to intervene here. What is your process for hiring people? Do you do criminal background checks?
Yeah, we, we drug test and do criminal background checks on everyone. But again, I'm gonna stress that Johnson Controls didn't have, from the mechanical standpoint, people working in Brownell during the daytime last Wednesday. We are strictly on a second shift that we start at three PM in the afternoon.
Well, somebody was in that building because, uh, I think we all got some type of
I know who I talked to and it was well up into the But when it first jumped off, it was, it was prime time because some of the kids were in the cafeteria having lunch.
You, you may have received a call in the morning on the work that was done the night before in regards to the piping, but Madam President, I'm the gentleman that spoke with you along with Herb Cavendish and it was in the evening. It was after five.
Maybe by the time we started talking, because you guys had to arrive. I waited, I waited on some of you. So like I said, I'm not gonna argue because I know it was the AM because like I said, I'm a first shifter. I get up for work at three in the morning. They called and woke me up. That's another reason why I was so livid. It was definitely during school hours.
Again, we can respectfully agree to disagree on that.
But point of information here, um, this is a subject that's not taken lightly, whether you did it or some other company did it. But, uh, we do have to be cautious about, uh, people in our building with our kids. Uh, you know, just heard an article the other day, a nine-year-old girl, you know, some kind of way and then ended in Farmington Hill and ended up in Detroit, uh, being taken advantage of, only nine years old. So these are some, are really concerning questions, not to send it, your company did it, but this is something that we should always talk to our workers about, uh, as administration as well. We need sign-in and sign-out sheets. We're gonna need to start taking people identification or something on these people because somebody could just make a copy of your company and come inside of that building and have your name on it. People are clever now. So I'm just saying that we as a board need to put in some type of procedure because we doing so much construction work. And we don't never know, uh, who it couldn't be, couldn't, it could have been somebody that wasn't even from Johnson Control that came into this building. This is a wake-up call for the board because we got so much going on that we need to be a little bit more careful about who's coming inside of these building, doing the work. Are they leaving? Um, then sometime come to that front office, let me see your identification and see that you're from Johnson's Control. If I'm, you know, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also speaking as a victim and, uh, also speaking for concern of other kids. That we as a board didn't think about the precautionary methods. Uh, not to have nothing to do with you saying you're done, but this is a good conversation to have. Something happened, somebody was in those building and here we are pointing fingers and we should be able to have a data log sheet to say exactly who came in. And that administration person will have to, from this day forward, and I could make a motion, take that ID, take some type of ID, you got a log sheet, what company you're from and exactly where you're going. Um, my understanding that Johnson Control comes in after, and after school hour, that was my understanding. Um, so
That is correct.
Trusting me, Nella, I, I think you're spot on and I would only add the additional layer. Sorry to cut you off Pastor, because I know you're trying to get in here. I just wanted to piggyback off of her real quick, is the COVID piece, right? So even me as a new board member, I've been, you know, visiting schools, but immediately as you come in, you know, you do the temperature check. So I think we also have to control that environment as well. You do the temperature check, you sign in and you answer those questions. So I, 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 I know that I had to go through as a board member. I just hope again that continues to be the same, uh, process throughout the district as well.
Yeah, especially with a construction company. Those workers need to present their ID, uh, when they're doing a Yeah, especially with a construction company. Those workers need to present their ID, uh, when they're doing a temperature check, present your ID, saying who you're from and administration need to log in who, you know, where they're going in that building. And, because we don't never know what a person mindset is. Just because you don't have a criminal record doesn't mean that you meant that you probably just didn't get caught yet. So, uh, just for our protection, uh, we in a new phase now. We're doing remodeling, um, we're doing a lot. And we don't want to point fingers on who's who, but we know somebody was in that building. So could we make a motion, um, Mr. Jones, do a procedure that, uh, anybody come in that building? Uh, they have to go beyond what we do is a check and a temperature. You gotta give us some ID. What's your thoughts?
I mean, you need, we need to.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask Johnson Controls, um, what is your procedure when you go on a job? I mean, how do you know that your crew, your manpower, your staff is where they are and they're doing what they're supposed to do? I mean, it's away from an office, so it has to be a way that someone is responsible for, uh, the workers, what they're supposed to be doing and the process to start that and finish that. And if in the process, there has not been any, uh, record of who's on those jobs at a particular time in a particular day and what time they started, what time they finished, that would tell the story of whether Johnson Controls have their own structure and protocol in place as a company. Because otherwise, then when people show up to do a job and the district and the board has a procedure in place, Johnson Controls must follow that. There's no exceptions to the rule because we in COVID now. And so in my mind, everybody, me, you, uh, Madam President and everybody else, Sister Monica, all of us are suspect when we arrive at that particular school. It's a procedure that we should have to follow in order for us to be recognized on that property. So I want to know what is the protocol? What is the directive from Johnson Controls for their employees when they have contracted a job and they have to go out to that job? Because from what I'm listening to and hearing, there's so much about this I don't like. But I want to give you the benefit of the doubt. Because I was a skilled tradesman for 33 years in General Motors. And I know that you cannot go out on a job and not report in some fashion, in some fashion or another, by way of a, uh, a phone or a beeper or pager or something. That, okay, Gilbert and, and, and Del Maroni, we on the job, we getting ready to pull it out, we getting ready to hook it up, we getting ready to tear it out and we on the job. And say, okay, Gilbert, we'll see you when you get done. Let us know what's going on if you need any assistance. So what I'm just saying is, what is the protocol? What is the company? And maybe it wasn't discussed in RFP, I don't know. I, I really don't care about that right now. What I care about is, what, and I, I, I sense a little defense from Johnson Controls, which sends my antennas up that something is not in place that should be in place for the sake, for the sake to complete the job and do the very best that you were contracted to do, to which the board accepted that. Now, I will say this about Johnson Controls. You guys have a good reputation. Yes, yes, you do. I know you do. But we're dealing with kids. We in a different territory. We in a different terrain now. So that's what I'm looking for. I want to hear it. I want to know it. And if you don't have it, please fix it as soon as possible. I don't like those pipes that they're open and I'm trying to listen to you and learn why that was not done. It just seems to me it's unsafe and if it sweats or something happens, it opens up or it fails, then what is the support from Johnson Controls in a continuing manner to support all the repair work and refurbishment that they did in each one of these schools? Is that in the contract? So I, it, it just, I'm very, very concerned and I'm very uneasy. So please, the rest of my colleagues on this board, put us at ease.
President McIntosh, uh, if I may, it, it sounds like to me that someone was in our schools in the morning. We don't.
And this is, let me, and it may have been, I'm checking my voicemail. I have some at 3:30. I contacted him at about 4:30 and I had already been there for a while when I contacted him. It definitely was not after five. But I did see students in the cafeteria, which Mr. Jones said Youth Quest is in the cafeteria. So when I saw these kids, I'm livid. I see them in the cafeteria, but they're not eating lunch. Maybe they're at an after-school program. But the sentiment is the same. It's young kids in this building and there you go.
Okay, and, and I understand that. My concern, though, is that someone was in the school. We may not even know who it was, just some contractors. It may in fact not have been Johnson Control. My concern, and I think it's, uh, a point of discussion later beyond their presentation, is to address school safety. I mean, this is the 21st century, 2021. And I, I'm gonna be surprised, shocked, if I learn that we don't have a process and procedure for visitors to our schools to sign in and do whatever else that needs to be done. It sounds like there may have been a breakdown within our own system to allow someone to enter our schools without signing in. And that's something we as a board, I think, need to address. But going back to your presentation, those, I'll call them pipes that were seen in the ceiling.
So just for point of clarification, the picture that we showed of the pipes that I showed are, were, it's not installed by Johnson Controls. That's previous installation due to the nature of what that roof is like. So, so I just wanted to show that. So we'll get to the pictures that we have of what we've installed.
That's what I was gonna ask. Where were they before? So I'm good. Thank you.
The pictures, the pictures I showed is their work, though. The pictures that I showed is their work. And we do have a process. They do sign in when you come in the building. They have a sign-in sheet. But my thought is, if you're gonna be hanging out, working, our, our administration needs to talk to you and know that's what you're doing. And if you're gonna be in there and you got seven, eight, nine, 10 men, we need to know you got seven, eight, nine, 10 men. If you got three, we need to know you got three. Because if four walk in there and up to something, well, three of them yours, but one of them ain't. But how would we know that?
And, and you know, and, and, and the, you're looking at the bigger picture. This is not only about the safety of our students, but in the event of a a fire or something like that, everyone needs to be accounted for. The students, the, uh, the teachers, all the visitors, that needs to be accounted for. So, um, but yeah, thank you.
I'd like to answer, uh, Board Member Gilbert's question and what our process is. So number one, um, I would be very saddened and disappointed if our people did not sign in and check in. We, we have a policy. We do a lot of work at schools, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. And it's always our policy that somebody che, that they check in and they sign in so people know that we're in the building. Um, so that is our policy. So I'm gonna follow up to make sure that it happened. And if it didn't, I'll try to find out where the, uh, you know, where the gap came on that. But in regards to us knowing, so with your project here, I have a dedicated superintendent that's here with those people. And his main job is to keep our people supplied with the materials, um, if they have any questions, that they're answered. So he does a roll call basically before we enter any of the buildings. We meet at Northwestern because we have a staging area at Northwestern. So basically, we meet there and then we stage out to the schools. And currently, right now, um, we're working between Brownell and Holmes. So he may go back and forth between the two. So he's got his eyes on these people all the time. And generally, um, because they're, they're on a second shift, I will normally call, our, our superintendent's name is Herbert Cavendish. I'll generally even call him to ask, um, you know, do we have a full head count? Did anybody not show in? Did anybody call off? And so I, I know from that standpoint, too, so that if someone wasn't there or didn't show up, we know that. And then we've had instances where, you know, people decided to leave early. And I generally get a text that says, you know, so-and-so decided to leave early. He's gone home, you know? And then I, I'll usually make a phone call to find out why. Is there an issue on why someone's leaving early rather than spending the, the duration of the project there? So we have a pretty good, you know, control in regards to that as far as when people are showing up and, and, and where, where they're at with that.
And, and Madam President, if I could just follow up and I'll shut up, is that what is your, um, COVID uh, policy or procedure or how, you know, how do you do that as far as when you're going into a school? Even though I guess I understand that the students are not there when they, when you guys start working, is what I hear. Now, I don't know whether that's actually true or not, but like I said, you guys have a good reputation. And I just want to know that what your reputation has been the many years that I, because I've worked with your technicians, I've worked with your agent back people. And I know what kind of work you guys do. But what is your, you go into the schools, did the administration have something that they presented? Or did you present something to them? Did, did the board know? I mean, because I'm kinda, that's kinda foggy to me.
So I'm not sure that I fully understand the question when you ask if the board knew. So we had laid out a schedule on what schools we were gonna be at, what schools we're gonna start at and then how long we anticipated being there and then where we were gonna go to next. So that schedule was laid out. And, and again, delivered to the administration, not put in the board members' hands. Um, so from that standpoint, that was laid out on that. And then in regards to the COVID, so we have, um, basically a self-check that all employees are supposed to do. And it's basically a questionnaire that's answered before everybody starts a day or they feeling sick, they had a fever, have they been exposed? You know, um, so they go through that. And I know when I, um, was out at Brownell last week, Herb mentioned that normally there's somebody there, even from the district, that would, was checking temperatures or I can't remember if it was, um, uh, just a station that was there, but I, and I don't remember. So, and I don't know if it wasn't working or, or the person wasn't there that was normally, um, checking the temperature. So, but I think even the school district has people checking, um, when we were coming in. But I can't guarantee that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Um, I just want, I know you're trying to get through your presentation, um, but I just do have maybe a suggestion that maybe, um, all the schools that you said you have worked on are completed. Then maybe, um, a couple of our board members could do a tour and do a check because that's the problem that we actually have. I, I include is what you're talking about up there. Um, it's just data. But I would feel comfortable. I'm serious. I would feel comfortable if, um, uh, we have some, seem to have some people got that experience and go through, and that's what we have been requesting, um, to check and balance what you guys are doing. And I think you can get the process through because when you, um, you leave us with a lot of, and doubt because I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know if you did it or not. Uh, and I'm not saying that you didn't. But because where my level, I, I do vehicle design and I can understand that language, but I don't understand that language. So I would just like to say that could our board members, uh, go in and do a quick, a check through? And, uh, that would just ease my, ease my conscience. Uh, because we looking at this money and I'm going, I go, I don't see that, I don't see that amount of work. But I don't know what that amount of work would cost. So that's what I would like to do. You can do all the presentation you want, but it's not gonna help, uh, the understanding because that's not my field and my language. But I would feel comfortable if our board members would take that initiative and work, walk with you guys and work through it. Then we don't have to go through this whole process, uh, because we know what the problem is. It's a lack of understanding of what you do. But we have somebody here that does understand it. If that's okay, by President McIntosh.
I have no problem with it because my thought is for all those buildings, the, the air has been hooked up too. Have we actually tested the air in those buildings to know they work or do we just install air? Because I know we have some electrical issues that should have rendered us unable to run our technology piece in an updated, uh, air system. I don't know how that was gonna work, but I'm interested in knowing if after this stuff has been installed, does it work?
Yeah, first of all, to your point, Madam, um, I think that's a great idea. Would love to. It is difficult to show pictures and talk about what we do, but to, to be able to walk around and kind of show you, I think that's a fantastic idea. In terms of startup and checkout, I'm gonna let Mike answer that question as a technical resource.
Yeah, and then, um, Dr. Joyce, one thing that, that I should have probably mentioned earlier, too, is that everything that we have done and completed, um, you know, we permit through the state because all mechanical work, electrical, everything is over, ever overseen by the state. So all of our drawings, everything that we did is submitted to the state for the state to review. So they do a plan review on it and then they will issue us a permit to proceed the work. So, you know, we followed that process and then when we get done, you know, we call the state to come out and do final inspection so that they can inspect it, um, and make sure that it was done per the drawings and, and what their expectations.
And that is so true because I had a school before and I understand that process. But, um, like I said, getting that oversight from them, and I think that eliminate a lot of conversation. Because when we look at the bill and the invoices, uh, I'm like, the only thing, you know, I understand what I pay for a purse, but then I look at your prices, it's different. But if with them going in and looking at it and going, okay, and I know you have to have that seal. I know you have to have those inspections from the state. And if we had that information as we go along, it'll make the process a lot better.
Yeah, one of the, one of the biggest struggles really for the work that we do is most of it's behind walls or behind closed doors that the general public never sees.
And you never see, but one thing about the state, you're not gonna get their sticker if it's, if it's not right. So, but that's my concern is that we need something visual, uh, to work with. And I didn't understand the language and I'm volunteering. My brother's over there across the hall. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Um, please complete your presentation first. Y'all, let's hold our questions until you finish. Oh, Mr. Walker, did you have a quick one?
I'll hold today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. You so.
So, um, currently, um, these are the cassettes, what the cassettes will look like, the air conditioning units in the classrooms that are, um, mounted. And in all the schools, uh, all of those are currently mounted, um, ready for, to be piped. So that was something that we did in the, in the summertime. Um, these are pictures of, uh, Brownell. So this is, you know, on the left, you can see where some of our refrigeration piping is running through the cassette unit. Uh, on the bottom there is where it actually crosses over from one side of the classroom hall to the other side. And then on the right, you can see some partial piping done there. Now, one thing is, um, we don't have a finished product here. Um, when this is done, now, the initial intent was, I mean, and it still is, is that all of the insulation that you're seeing, because all the piping is insulated, um, gets basically a white vinyl jacket put over it. Um, so that's really the only covering that was being put over that is, would, would be a white vinyl jacket.
And now with, with this hanging down, when the, when everybody, them kids gonna jump.
Oh, no doubt.
Okay, you out of, you, as long as we know, these kids.
That's from the wall. I mean.
Well, it's hanging, some of it, enough for a young kid who think they finna slam dunk to test theyself. They patent it today and then tomorrow, somebody gonna be swinging from that.
So now, um, what we, so we heard, um, President McIntosh's concern last week when, uh, we spoke with her out at Brownell. Now, we're, the initial design was that, um, again, this is gonna be exposed piping, it'd be white vinyl jacket. But we did say that we, we could come up with the, a type of cover that we could almost use as a snap lock. So, you know, I had this one done real quick, so it's kind of a rough thing and we figured we could, we would paint it white or try to blend in with the ceiling. So I just want to show what it is. So I just want to show what it is. So essentially, this would basically snap lock over the piping. And it would cover the piping and it's pretty heavy gauge. You guys can tap on it.
That one is heavy.
Okay, all right, let's see.
Okay, so we would have to vote because that's going to be an additional cost? So when they're done with their presentation, if I, in case I get sidetracked, let's remember to vote to receive that because that's additional.
So, yeah.
That's additional cost?
That would be additional cost. So the, the question would be though, is, um, do you, would you want it in all the classrooms or strictly in the public spaces and in the hallways?
Well, the issue is, we know our kids. I'm, I'm just going to be honest. We know our kids. And when somebody is not looking, one of them little bad kids is going get to jumping and touching that every day when they come through.
Won't be my grandchild.
They're going to be jumping and touching it this week, then they're going to start skying it. And then they're going, somebody going to want to swing on it and get that extra. And I just don't know because we got different type of children. Go ahead, Mr. Delmarone.
How high are the ceilings?
The ceiling at Brownell is probably a eight and a half or nine foot ceiling. It's a, it's a fairly low ceiling compared to like Pearson and Potter and Freeman. It's somewhat lower.
And how old are the students in those classrooms? I, I mean, I'm just wondering, is, you know, if they're second graders, they're not going to jump eight and a half.
Right.
Yeah. So the, the, the ceilings are a metal pan ceiling because there's, um, radiant heat up above that. So all of it's a metal pan basically perforated so that the heat can come through the ceiling. So it's heated basically from the, from the top down.
And I think you have mostly jumping based on my experience in school. Yet, yet, um, elementary's kid is not going to be jumping up in the ceiling like that. I haven't seen it. But when you get into that middle school or junior high, oh, that's playground for them. Uh, but, um, when you're looking at Burnell, because the ceiling there are low. Uh, but we got what, fifth and sixth grader, fifth graders at Burnell.
That is Brownell.
But that same situation is that. Is that Potter, Pierce and Freeman, correct?
So Pierce, Potter and Freeman, their ceiling is a 10-foot ceiling. And, um, there is, it's not a, it's not a pan ceiling. It's a pre-cast concrete ceiling and they, um, basically have like 12 by 12 tiles that are, that are glued on it. So that's why all of the infrastructure that's currently at Pearson Potter, as far as electrical and everything, it's all really mounted to that ceiling and up on, on the side walls.
Okay.
There's going to be like the white vinyl casings over this. So there, it's not going to be as obvious. And if it's a higher ceiling with white vinyl casing, I mean, I'd be concerned if it was lower and it looks more like gym bars, the swing on. But I think, uh, I think we probably should go with a case by case basis. I don't think, there might be like one or two situations where we might want to have casing, but I think overall, I think we're probably going to be okay. But we maybe kind of put that in reserve in case we see a situation that could be potentially hazardous.
Yeah, I, I might recommend that when the finished product is up and in, that maybe you guys take a look at it and you can make a better determination on the, on the finished product.
I can support that. Yep, that's right.
Yeah, that's a fair decision.
Are, are those ductless air conditioners on the, on the wall there, the white units?
Yeah, those are, those are ductless.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, uh, if I may, um, Madam Chair's return, but I wanted to know the, the, uh, maintenance part. After it's done, how is that? Is it anyone out of the, the district, uh, that is kind of working with you guys? And, or either you're going to have some type of continued support, you know, as time goes on to make sure things that those that look after this and monitor it within the school district know what, they have the skill to do it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with you. And we do have a maintenance contract. Um, and we've, we've discussed, um, and kind of coordinated the maintenance contract with what is already being done with the district resources with, um, the different maintenance directors. And there's been a few different maintenance directors, but we've worked with, with Pete, um, for a while now. So, so we do have a good handle on, on who's doing what and make sure that nothing does fall through the cracks. Because we don't want you to spend the money to do the things that you're doing to, to rectify decades of, of.
Deferred maintenance.
Deferred maintenance and have to do it again in five or 10 years. We want this stuff to last.
So Board Member Gilbert, one of the other things that you asked was the warranty. And I meant to mention this when we were going through this. So all the air handlers that we rebuilt, so like the motors, um, the bearings, um, the variable frequency drives, all have a five-year warranty on them. So the medicine system that was installed, that has a three-year, they have the control system that was installed has a three-year warranty on that. So, um.
And that three-year, don't mind me interrupting, is, is that the electronical, the brains, the mechanism?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Okan. Appreciate it.
Mr. Walker, did you have, anybody else have anything else they like to say? Okay, at this time, we're not voting on doing anything. They're just giving us information. So thank you for coming before us. Hopefully we weren't too rough on you and hopefully we got some problems solved.
I think we're all in the same boat. We want to do the right thing for the students. And the learning environment, I have kids in public school and the learning environment's greatly important for their being able to focus on the teachers, the, the tasks at hand and not, wow, it's hot here. Wow, it's cold in here. You know, there, it's raining in here. So we, we're all in the same place. We want to do the same thing.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for taking over three hours, three and a half hours of your time and sitting through this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We do appreciate it as well.
Thank you, man. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Um, I will now call upon Ms. Rubin to present the Human Resources Committee of a Whole Action Items to the board.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I seek a motion and a second to move action item 1.8 Personnel Recommendations to the Regular Board Meeting October 20th for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing there is none, and this is for our personnel recommendations.
Personnel recommendations.
Personnel recommendations, Pastor Gilbert, is job recommendations. If anybody has retired, we've had a couple of people pass on. If anybody is moving from one position to another, those are our personnel recommendations. And if, um, you, you don't want to vote for something, but you want to vote for something else, you can separate those things. You know how to do it though. But yes, that's what.
And Monica, she, she broke me down right quick. Sister Monica did. She gave me a crash course.
Okay, so, uh, the, the motion has been made to accept the personnel recommendations. Do we have any support?
Support.
Oh, was it already seconded? And we were on discussion. And there is no further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Seeing there is none, the vote is on the floor. Did you have something, Mr. Delmarone?
No, I'm not ready to vote.
Okay. Um, the, um, we are now getting ready to take a roll call vote to accept the Personnel Recommendations, action item 1.8. As I call your name, say yes to accept or no not to accept. Ms. Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Dr. Joyce Alice McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Delmarone?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And myself. It's a yes. Personnel recommendations has passed. Six yes, one absent.
Thank you. I seek a motion and a second to move action item 1.9 Authorization to Adopt Restated Tax Sheltered Annuity Plan Documents 403B Planned to the Regular October 20th for Adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, seeing it's been moved and properly seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Mr. Delmarone?
Yes, um, President McIntosh, uh, this is for the retirement, the, the, those who are retired. It allows them to basically do things that the IRS already permits, from what I've read.
This is our tax sheltered annuity for our current employees.
Current employees.
And, and what, uh, the, the change was, the language changed with the IRS. And when that language changed under our old policy, we were allowed to take a partial dispersment. When the language changed, the TSA company disallowed partial dispersments. It was all or nothing. So we went back to the TSA to say we want our employees to be able to have a partial dispersment if they wanted to take a part of their annuity out. And the example that was given to me, like if someone wanted to buy a home, they could take out a deposit and pay themselves back. So that's what this language allows them to continue to do that.
Current employees only.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's, that's all I was asking.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Pastor Gilbert, did you have a question? Okay, he got you. Okay, seeing there is no further discussion, um, let me get to, let me find my script. It's, it's getting late now. Seeing there is no further discussion, uh, the motion is on the floor to accept action item 1.9. Um, as I call your name, we'll be taking a roll call vote. Signify yes to accept and no not to accept. Uh, Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Dr. Joyce Alice McNeil?
Yes.
Chris Delmarone?
Yes.
Uh, Pastor Gilbert?
Yes.
And Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, the motion passes six yes and one absent. Next, we'll be moving on to, uh, we're done with Ms. Rubin? No, I'm sorry. Next, we'll go to our, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Yeah, we sorry. Okay.
Madam Chair? A point of what?
Point of information.
Doc, doc, yeah, point of information. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. McNeil, talk into mic so we can hear you.
What if I turn it on? What if I turn it on? Okay, thank you. All right, okay. I got you. Okay, I just want to know because she's such a great person.
I'll find out.
Okay. All righty. I might not wanted you to hear that. Okay. All right.
Okay, I would like to call the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting to order. I will now call upon Mr. Jones to present action items to the board.
Right. I seek a motion and a second to move action item 11.6 Authorization to Execute Service Agreement, UST Compliance Services to the Regular Board Meeting for Adoption.
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and properly seconded?
It has been, sorry. I am so sorry, Chair. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So the, these, so this is where the, the bus terminal is? Is this where they do the maintenance? Is that right, Assistant Superintendent Jones?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is it, these tanks, are they in the back, out of the way, or where are they actually? They're under the ground, right?
They're under the ground. ARC, yeah, okay.
Is this, yeah, is this the property we were dealing with earlier this year? That we don't even own this? We don't even own this property?
But we have to.
Oh, we still have possession?
Right.
But I thought.
This is reimbursable though. The state reimburses this.
Correct. Completely reimbursable or is it, I, it looked like it was only, might be partially reimbursable.
Thank you, Assistant McIntyre. Thanks, because that's what I, I didn't quite.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't say completely. It says funds are made available. Okay, so the work is reimbursable by the state and MUSA and funds are made available for the general fund. So we supply it with the general fund and then it's completely reimbursable?
So let's, we're going to find that out for you.
Okay.
We, we can find that out before the next board meeting.
So are we tabling this then? Is that the sentiments that I'm hearing? What's going on?
We have to do it.
I, well, we're in a discussion.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, yeah, right. You chair. I'm sorry, Mr. McIntyre. It's late.
So, I remember a whole bunch of storage tank issues on previous boards. Is this the same storage tank issue? Okay, so we do need more information because this was a mess. The last two conversations that I remember sitting in the audience going, what the heck is going on? And I think the rest of the, and so I would, I want, again, some institutional memory about the process, about how we got to where we are. The other thing that concerned me was with ARC Environmental that it says, God, and where's my thing? It has, after, okay, so we got a, we got a letter August 9th. Well, it was dated August 3rd. It was received in District August 9th. And number two item order says, after a release has been reported to Eagle, initial corrective actions must be performed immediately and expeditiously. So, and I was reading through all of this. So at some point, ARC Environmental reported a discharge from the storage tank, is what Eagle is saying. What were they doing investigating our storage tanks? The same company that is now bidding to replace or repair these tanks. They're the ones that found the discharge? Like, I don't understand what is going on. And this looks, so just to add that to the, the, the information that we need and why we need the information. But we do have a deadline.
I did see that too, Laura.
Of December 22nd, 2021. Unless we make a written request for an extension, which has to be granted. It may not be granted. Um, and also we can say that we don't think that we're responsible for, you know, the property or something. So we need to do this as soon as possible because of the December deadline. So I'm.
Point, yes.
If we can recall when we first came on the board, you and I, we had this conversation. And it was a very, uh, it was a requirement by the state. Their property over on Court Street, uh, just like the building that I had over on Avery, they had underground tanks under. Even if I sold the property, I was, I am responsible from removing those, uh, oil tanks from underneath the ground. That is my responsibility. And the state has strict guidelines about that. So what had happened, you know, we had that conversation and now they have came back and said, hey, something else needs to be done. These are state regulation rules. Has nothing to do with Eagle. Uh, if the state, uh, Eagle come back out and, and the state, because you're not going to get that clearance until those, uh, tanks are done properly. That's why I had to leave the tanks underneath the ground because I had, I had four oil tanks underneath some property and order for me to release. So that's what they're saying is that this is by the state. We're going to get, I don't know how much of this money back. But we at a state, this is, we, that property that we have, I believe that it's supposed to have been sold or whatever. But it's still a liability to the Flint School Board if we don't take care of this. Am I correct?
I'm so sorry. I'm, so if I may interject.
Thank you.
Do I, do I, do I have the, the authority? Okay.
Proceed, ma.
You know, I'm getting message.
We all are.
Uh-huh. Your lovely Williams. Your lovely Williams firm negotiated this, uh...
With Dean Yodas. And Dean Yodas sold it.
Here we go.
Go ahead, I remember this. They were supposed to be to handle this.
The Williams firm negotiated this sale of the warehouse. And the underground storage tanks were remained in the property. Well, we've had turnover and facility directors, of course, and those underground storage tanks have been reported to be removed. And so, this, it is on the state's radar. And so therefore, we, as Dr. McNeil has said, we do have the obligation now. We still own this property. The board still owns this property.
Yeah.
And so, there is a person that wants to take possession of the property, but he's making us responsible as the board to take care of those obligations.
Okay, does he have, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Does he have a lease, is this the guy that was leasing the transportation services? Okay, and he was behind on his lease at one point?
He is.
And suddenly got current. Is he on behind now?
He is.
Because he's never current. So my thought is, because I remember this, and it's a shysty deal, for one. It did make no sense, because it started off with, we sold this property originally to Attorney Dean Yodas. Okay? Then Dean Yodas decided to pass the property on to someone else. This someone else was behind on the mortgage, okay? Hadn't been paying their rent. But we received notice that, that we were responsible for the gas tanks, how we found...
The underground storage.
Yeah, so how we found out that he was behind on his rent, because we thought we had sold it, but we hadn't sold it, and he was behind on his rent, wasn't even paying rent. And then we had to get the tanks removed, but it was to my understanding that we were up against time and that we had got them removed. And that was when Kendall was still here. So, why are we having this conversation again, and we need to look at that paperwork? Because did we pay somebody already the first time when we thought we had it removed?
Where's, you're still paying ARC Environmental. They are the company that has been working on behalf of the district. We hired them. It's by, it occurred when the prior Director of Facilities, Mr. Andrews, and started to get it, to expose the fact that we were in this lease issue with the non-payment, and we were going to take possession of the property back.
I remember that, I remember that. And then they circle back and pretended like he was current on his rent. And I don't believe that, because why would you say he hadn't paid rent in a year or however long, and then all of a sudden, he's suddenly current? I, I mean, so we need to check into this. That's all I'm saying.
Irregardless to resolve the issue, you still have to do something here. Mr. Trustee Del...
So who was behind on the rent? Who was behind on the rent? I'm hearing somebody was renting, they were behind on it, we sold it.
Whoever is the person that has possession of the property now, at one point, when we were discussing these tanks, they were...
It's Mr. Dandy.
Okay. They were negligent on their rent payments.
And who owns the property now? We, we do. So what happened to the sale to Yodas?
I guess he decided he wanted to sell it to somebody else, and that's what he did. Some kind of third-party sales?
I guess we have to ask the Williams firm.
So if we sold it to Yodas, and Yodas sold it to someone else, how did we get the property back?
Because how the Williams firm explained it, whatever happened, I guess we didn't receive full payment.
Correct. You guys were receiving installments.
Like a land contract style deal, but the guy had kind of breached the land contract. Because the guy had breached the land contract, and we had agreed to take the property back. And then mysteriously, he was current. So...
So, who was our legal counsel at the time?
The Williams firm.
The Williams firm.
This is why we need the case notes from the Williams firm. So it's something that we need to talk with Attorney Lee about. Right. I'm just saying, but we need to add this onto the list of things that, for her to investigate. And also possibly pursuing legal action about whatever is going on here with whomever is negligent or more than negligent. So, but, we do have the December 22nd deadline. So it is urgent for us to, I would say that we, um, I, I would say we, we should have an emergency meeting. For what? To make a decision, to get the information and make a decision immediately about what to do about this situation, so that it can get taken care of.
So are you, so am I, I just, can I ask, may I? So, am I hearing the board saying that we do need some more, we need to make a move, but we need more information to make a determination?
We need to have Attorney Lee look into, I think, this situation immediately. And look at the, the sale contracts, the lease contracts, the Eagle documentation, the ARC Environmental reports.
Okay, but this is my question. Are we going to vote on this tonight, or are we tabling this till we get some information?
Well, I think we're going to have to table the, the authorization to execute the service agreement.
Okay, so we're tabling this?
Well, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make a motion and vote on to table it. But I also think, and I'm, I'm not making the motion, I'm sort of like throwing it out there in discussion, that we perhaps might consider having an emergency meeting, once this information is gathered. I mean, I think we need to act on this.
Well, it depends on how soon she's able to get us the information, because she gives us the information right before a regular board meeting.
Right before the regular meeting, but then this will be tabled?
Well, it, well, we can bring it back.
Okay.
You can, all you got to do is make a motion to address it, I'm sure. Can we do that, Ma? Yeah, I thought we could.
Okay. Uh, Chris, go ahead.
So can we not ask for the extension prior to getting this information? I'm seeing those as two separate events. We can ask for the extension to make sure it's timely, it gets there, we get the yes or no. And then at the same time, working on the process of finding out whatever legal documents we need to obtain.
So we could ask for the extension with the understanding that it could possibly not be granted, but at the same time, moving forward with all deliberate speed. Right? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, exactly.
Because we, we still need to find out and make sure that it's even some tanks in the ground, because we were told this problem was dealt with and paid for.
When I, when I hear something was leaking, I'm thinking the tanks are still on the ground.
So, in the papers that we were submitted for this meeting, it says that ARC Environmental reported a leakage to Eagle, which is why Eagle sent us the August communication.
Who is Eagle, though?
The environmental...
From the state?
Yes.
Are they from the state? Okay.
Yeah, it's that euphemistic label. They've called, they've recalled themselves after the water crisis to make them sound more like a bird of flight.
Okay, I got you now. I'm with you.
M D E Q.
Yeah, M D E Q.
Okay, there we go. Now I know who you're talking about. Thank you, Mr. Del Marone.
So are we making a motion? So, Pastor Gilbert, were you, you were about to say something? Okay. Okay.
So, you want me to make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we try and rally for an extension on this work, as well as do an investigation through Attorney Lee to see where we stand with this property. Do we own it? Are they current? And to find out what our options and avenues are.
Support.
So it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion of President McIntosh's motion?
If I may, could I just amend that, that there be verification? There be proof and verification of what's in the ground, what is leaked? If it's nothing in there and there's no leaks, we need some way to verify what, what's there and what is not.
That's, that, that was in the request.
That's part of it?
Yes, sir. That was in the motion. But we'll have Sharice Lee investigate it. She'll be able to tell us.
Oh, she'll find out.
Yeah, she'll find out through the state what tanks are there, what is not, when it was worked on. All of that should be logged in with the state.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of approving the motion? Do I take a roll call or say iron A?
That was a request of...
Oh, okay, I, sorry, Pastor Gilbert, roll call. Trustee Del Marone?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
Uh, Assistant Secretary Treasurer Walker?
Yes.
Uh, President McIntosh?
Yes.
And Secretary McNeil?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so that's a six to zero approval. Do we need to table this?
That's basically what I took that.
So that's, okay, so that encompassed the tabling, and then we can move on. Okay, so, um... Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, seeing no further action, I declare the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor over to President McIntosh for the Board Committee of the whole portion of the agenda.
Excuse me, you have a...
Treasurer McIntyre, I just have one quick thing.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. And I think this is just something to help me, and I don't know if it's any other board member moving forward, but so often when I look through the packet, I see funds coming out of General Fund. And sometimes there's a balance sheet there, but I think if, maybe there could be further clarity regarding the General Fund, because again, that's something that continues to be dwandled down. And I just want to make sure that I'm taking that into account as we're saying yes or no, right? When you see General Funds, it's just writing, without, I didn't see a balance sheet in this, but just, I think we'll have one in our next package. Just want to make sure that that's there. So it'll help inform decision makings, right?
Yeah, and that's something that I did kind of mention, but not as, as clearly and succinctly as you did. So, yeah, that, that is a concern, that if it is paid by the grant, it still comes out of the General Fund until it's reimbursed. If it's reimbursed.
Oh, yeah. I just see, I mean, you see so, General Funds so much in other areas as well, so it just helps.
Thanks for...
I just, yeah, so turn the board, or turn the floor over to President McIntosh for the Board Committee of the whole portion of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Board members, before we proceed, I would like to add a discussion item to the agenda for discussion. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, what?
Next, next, um, I have something to add, a discussion, uh, item. Next month, the M A S B Annual Conference is being held in Grand Rapids, starting at 9:00 a.m. On Thursday, November 11th, four board members, myself, Attorney Green, Attorney Green, myself, Secretary, no, Vice President Green, Secretary McIntyre, no, Secretary McNeil, and Treasurer McIntyre are attending, because that is a long drive. I am requesting that the board move the board call scheduled for November 10th to Wednesday, November 17th. And we hold back-to-back meetings, the call and the regular meeting on November 17th.
That's, that's on you.
I support you.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Green.
Our, our new board member going to this conference as well?
What is the pleasure of the...
I think they should be afforded that opportunity, for sure.
Absolutely. That, that's most definitely, because we took that vote last, um, last month.
Before the cutoff, but they're more than willing, I think, under the circumstances, that it would be...
I think, in my opinion, that it would be best for all of us to go.
Together.
So we got to hurry up and get on the same plane pill, I mean, uh, plane field. And also, you know, we're talking about rewriting bylaws, and, and I just think all of us as a body as whole, it's in Grand Rapids, it's a three-day...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a three-day training for board members. You only get this once a year. And get it over with and get it done.
And I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I'd also like to specify for our new members, and I'll explain it to them. Your hotel is paid for, right, Ma? Your hotel room and everything will be paid for. So you'll just have to make plans to not be home. But the expenses are carried by the district.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm all for training, yeah.
Okay.
So it would be, it's November 11, 12, it's that, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and it goes even into Sunday. But the board meeting that, pardon?
Should we wait till Pastor Gilbert gets back so that we can...
But the request that President is asking is everyone in agreement, because you do...
To doing this, we have to...
You do have to, because we've already adopted a regular meeting schedule. You would have to, I can put a resolution into the board packet next week that you actually formally adopt, and we notify the public that we're holding only one meeting next month.
Yep.
Okay, and Pastor Gilbert, to update you, we have some board training. It is in Grand Rapids. It is for three days. The board does pick up your expenses for hotel. Um, I'm going to read it again to you, because you stepped out. I'll give you that opportunity, because you're new.
I heard you say something about the board picks up my expenses.
I'm going, I'm finna, I'm finna run it all down to you. That's why I said I'm going to read it again. Okay, next month, the M A S B's Annual Conference is being held in Grand Rapids, Michigan, starting at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, November 11th. Four board members, myself, Ms. Green, Ms. McIntyre, and Ms. McNeil were attending. Mr. Walker was going to be, is going to be out of town. And attending, because that is a long drive. I am requesting that the board move the board's call scheduled for November 10th to Wednesday, November 17th. And we hold back-to-back meetings, the call and the regular meeting on November 17th, to accommodate the board's absence, because you won't have a quorum, because four of us are going to be gone. So, we said, since we're going to foil your board, uh, meeting, we're going to invite you to come along, so we'll still all be together as a board. So we're inviting you and Mr. Del Marone to join us. Your hotel will be paid for, as well as the classes. We just need your presence and your yay.
Yay.
Actually, so... So I heard, um, basically you...
Yeah, I'll be in DC for work on the...
But the motion, did you second her motion?
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I wanted on the record. All right, take your roll call vote, Board President.
Um, to move our meeting, to hold two meetings on November 17th, I will hold a roll call vote. When I call your name, signify by saying yes to accept or no, not to accept. Uh, Ms. Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Dr. Joyce Alice McNeil?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chris Del Marone?
Yes.
Pastor Allen Gilbert?
Yes.
And Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh. It is a yes for me, and the motion passes six yes. Thank you, uh...
And then that's your reminder about the committee selections.
Oh, that's right, that's right, because I'm looking, and you, we talked about this. I'm, because I'm looking like, what in the world is this? Okay, and so our committee selections, when you change seats, the chair of those committees change, because different chairs, different positions on the board chair certain committees. So we are going to have to change, and we are going to have to assign our new board members to our subcommittees. So, we will get this done and have our appointments together next week. I will stay on top of this and be diligent. I will be diligent and have that information to you, and I'm going to shock you, because I am going to have this to you by Monday. You're going to be on the board. Me and Mo are going to... Me and Mo are going to, look, me and Mo are going to work on this unless she's going to be absent. Then I might be a day late. So that is our information for that. And now we are moving on to Action Item 21.13. I am seeking a motion and a second to authorize and execute consultant, uh, consultant agreement to the regular meeting on October 20th, 2021 for adoption.
So move.
Support. I think our new members trying to find that information.
Right, we're going to give them a chance, because I got to turn my page to my...
Page 76.
Page 76?
I'm one page away. I was doing good, okay.
I don't have my page number.
Okay, yes, yes. And what this is, I'm going to explain it to you, because we have new board members. Our CFO, Ms. Diane Prey, is out on leave, and we have been without a active CFO for, uh, her whole absentee. And we are missing out on some key information and some things that need to be taken care of in the district. So, at this time, we are requesting that our former CFO, Ms. Carrie Zakelski, who is absolutely awesome, be allowed to step in on this special assignment to cover this and to help us with some of our, um, other things that we need as it pertains to the CFO position. with some of our, um, other things that we need, as it pertains to the CFO position. So that is what this action item is about, is covering that, um, covering that absence. So I need a motion and some support.
We did.
Oh, did I get that? Oh, y'all on the ball tonight, go ahead, uh... Okay, um, is there some discussion? That's why I explained that, that's right, seeing there is none. Um, this time, I will take a roll call vote, signify by saying yes to support, or no, not to support, uh, Ms. Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Dr. Joyce Ellis McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Del Marone?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor Allen Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, it is a yes, it passes unanimously. Moving right along. Next, we have action item 20.14. I call upon Mr. Jones to present this action item.
I gave you the script.
Did you give me the script? Well, why am I calling upon Mr. Jones?
I'll do it, I just...
Oh, we give it here, I do it.
I, I don't mind.
Because I'm like, I ain't got nothing but this. Okay. Mr. Jones, you got it?
I don't.
Oh, he don't, okay, I'll do it.
Whatever you want me to do.
Okay, um, I seek a motion and a second to move action item 21.14, which is our G, G Card Head Start program. Now, I was all prepared to turn this down, but I think we are already in the middle of this program, and I think we already supported it.
Yeah.
This is not ISD.
Right.
Now, to update our new members, we are trying to get the process going, to get our early childcare. At this point, we are working on getting our early childcare development program back, and this program is already in effect. So we're not actually voting it in, it's already taking place. Yes, sir, Mr. Del Marone?
There are, it's already in place, uh, and you've already voted on it before?
I don't think we've voted on it, I think that it's kind of been like a month-to-month, because this is our regular program, and they're already in our house, we just hadn't got a chance to vote on it. So we're voting tonight, is my understanding, Mo?
This is the G Card, um, Head Start, very specific classroom, um, space that they utilize that is at homes.
And it's a month-to-month?
No, this is for a full year.
Right, but we've been going month-to-month, because we didn't approve it, so they've just kind of been hanging in there.
Okay, so I guess in the future, I would like to, to vote on things before they start?
Absolutely.
This is, this is a two-year. Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I thought 2020, 30.
Is this two-year?
This is two-years.
Oh, no.
Point of clarity, point of clarity, so look at your, look on page, um, 80. There's, the contract encompasses many documents.
Right.
And G Card, um, makes the Genesee County Supes all exercise one document. They chose, so when you look at page 80, forgive me, 98, and it's very tiny at the very bottom.
98.
Yep, so at the header, it speaks about a memorandum of understanding. This is the piece that, um, the G Card has all of the Genesee County superintendents that are part of this program, and you'll see down below, it lists Beecher, Carmen Ainsworth, Flint...
Page 99, at the top of 99.
At the bottom, it talks about the service areas, yes. This is the one that, uh, Mr. Jones is referencing as two years, but this one that you are actually, um, so it encompasses multiple programs. Ms. Wilson did verify that it was G Card that made the decision to make it a two-year agreement? Because they do do it every year. So, if the board chooses, they can elect to tell the superintendent to cross off, or not sign, or interim superintendent. But your other agreements, when you look on the previous pages, you're only going to see July 1 through June 30.
So I do want to say this as a point of information, this board voted to try and get our early childcare development program back next year. To me, this is a direct slap in our face, as to how people come in our house and try to take over. Now, we voted on that early in the year. So you usually ask for a one-year contract, so since we said we don't want you here next year in advance, and we're going to take this year to get ourselves together and try to take that back, because that is a lot of our financing for our district, early childcare development, brings a lot of money to the district. So now, you heard us say we are interested in getting that back, so you're going to shoot us a two-year contract this year, versus your usual one-year? See, this is the type of disrespect that burns me up. And then you're already not paying rent, if I'm not mistaken, because I read this, and I may have misunderstood it, but if I'm mistake, if I'm reading this correctly, you're in our house, with our students, for free, collecting the monies. You're not going to pay no bills, no electric, no rent, no nothing, and then you got the nerves that you're going to run it back again next year. So for that reason, I am not going to support this, they're already here, I will support it for this year. A matter of fact, I like to make a motion that we make this con, I like to amend the motion, because did we move, I like to make amendment to the motion, that this is only a one-year contract, ending at the end of this year, so we can have the opportunity to live up to our motion that this board agreed upon earlier in this year, to get our early childcare development back. If we can't get it back, then let them bring it back for a year, like they've been doing.
Madam President, I support that.
Yes, Ms. Laura?
I have a question, in terms of the, the rent, that...
Well, wait a minute, Ms. Laura, because he supported, the motion is on the floor, and he supported it.
I thought we were in discussion.
And do we have a second? You still discuss it after the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion has been made, it's been properly seconded, any discussion?
That we, what's the motion to do the contract for one year? That's the motion, so we're going to change...
And this contract ends, not from today, one year.
Right.
From the beginning of the 2021 school year, to the end of the twen, to the, to the, yeah, the 2021, 2122 school year. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And we need that in our notes, because I don't need them sliding nothing in, I don't need no flukes and none of that.
Right.
Only thing that I'll just add is a question. Go ahead, Mo.
Do we have to support and then go to discussion, or have we already...
We're in discussion.
I thought we were in discussion.
Yeah, we are, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Go ahead, Mo.
Well, what I was going to say is, if you look at your resolution, what you're actually adopting is that it is only giving him, meaning Mr. Jones, the authority to operate a Head Start program from September 1 through June 30. I'll change that date to say 22, okay?
Okay, thank you.
And then you'll have to change the signer as well, right, to interim, uh, superintendent Jones?
Yes.
What page is that on?
Uh, 85.
So, my question would be, the other districts, so that we've got Fenton, Grand Blank, some other districts that have contracted with G Card, are the conditions the same for the other districts? Do the other districts provide rent in-kind, or is this just for the Flint schools? So, our rent is approximately 1,400 per month, which then we donate, so we're basically paying, that's, that's the...
Yeah, and giving them the money.
Right, right, right. Is that what the other districts do?
Probably not.
Other districts, they're not in trouble, we in either, though, but I don't know.
But I, but...
I understand.
But you know what I'm saying, so, because I'm not, I'm not, I don't agree to this in-kind donation, either.
I don't either, to be honest, Ms. Laura, I feel like they should be paying rent, you collecting money, it ain't like you in there...
They're collecting money for our students.
And in our building, in our house, for free, because we can't stay here for free, so why should they be able to?
And we're providing the elect, we're providing the utilities, the security...
And the students.
The janitorial.
And the students, everything. Except we just ain't getting the money.
And in our contract, oh, I'm sorry, in the contract, it says that we can get, uh, legal counsel, maybe we let Sharice go through this, and take our things, just not benefiting us.
Okay, we can have Ms. Lee look it over.
And I do want to add, just so you know this part of it, I, I hear you, and you're right, I, I think we need to look into all of those things, but we do, uh, get the opportunity to have our Head Start and Early Childhood trickle into our kindergarten, uh, in our kindergartens in the district. So other districts, yes, they are doing this, and they're receiving those scholars that are coming in from Head Start and Early Childhood. So, uh, I'm not saying that, if, I'm not saying that they would take this from us, we, we want it back, but we also want to be able to have those babies in our district, so that they can trickle into our kindergarten, and they, they become our FTE at that point. Now, I'm not saying we're not going after the Early Childhood to have it for ourselves, uh, at the right time, but I am saying, those scholars that are in our district now, that are in the Head Start program, and in the Early Childhood, they go into, a large portion of those scholars go into our kindergarten.
Yes.
And they become a part of our district.
Okay. Point well taken, Mr. Jones, is there any further discussion?
I just, so, does G Card, do they have, uh, professionals, teachers with degrees, or what? I mean, I'm lost, I'm, I'm, I'm slipping off the mountain here.
With permission, if you do read the contract, they contract to a third-party vendor.
So it seem like we could do that and get our own money, couldn't we?
What?
Counties contractors, the Oakland Livingston Head Start Agency, and I didn't have enough time to do research to see who this third-party was, but it's in Oakland Livingston County, it's even out of county, and, you know, it's, it's, so that, that's another one of my concerns. It's like, G Card isn't even providing it themselves, which might be a good thing, because you don't hear my opinion of G Card at this point.
Okay, and I do want to add this, how does somebody take our early childcare development from us? Third-party it out, and then make us provide services for free?
Yeah, and that's...
Okay, but anyway, so let's do this, so now we have an amendment on the floor, and now we're all, so this is what I would like to do at this point, because they're already operating in our house. So I say, let's let them keep operating, let's table this as well, let Sharice look it over, find out what our options are, and if we just got to free-willy it the rest of the year, I'd rather do that than commit to them, and, and get stuck into something, and then you got somebody, because at this point, they don't have a contract. So if we want to bring our own people in on their program, it's not like they can say, no, you can't do that, because you don't even have a contract. So see what I'm saying?
And they have kids anyway, they living out...
Yeah, and you, and you bringing people from Livingston County to Flint, Michigan, or, I mean, or you just in Livingston County, looking for people in Flint? And I think we can find people in Flint better than they can, because we right here in Flint. So anyway, at this time, I'd like to make an amendment to my original motion, which at this point, I don't even remember what it was. Um, I think the, the original, the original motion was to make this a one-year contract upon us doing research. So now, I would like to make the amendment be that we table the whole thing, until we can get Ms. Sharice to look into this, to see what our options truly are, and then bring it back, after we are more informed, better informed, and then take the vote.
Support.
Okay, it has been, um, the, uh...
You made the motion?
Yes, the, uh, what is it called?
amended motion?
Uh, the amendment has passed, at this time, I'm going to take a roll call vote, signify by saying yes if you support the amendment, and no if you don't. Ms. Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Del Marone?
Yes.
Uh, Pastor Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yep.
Carol McIntosh, it's a yes for me. The motion passes six, and one absent, thank you. Next, we are moving on to... Board members in your pocket.
Madam, madam President, a point of order, did, we did, that's the amendment, right?
That was the amendment.
Amendment to the motion, right?
And we voted on a motion.
Did we, we already took care of the motion? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, point of information, I think once we vote on the amendment, then don't we have to vote on the motion?
We have to.
Or not, I don't know, I don't know.
Yes, this is where we are, this is, okay, scratch that.
I could be wrong.
I'm tired, and I ain't no expert, but let's do this, then, to be right in order. First of all, let's take a vote to scratch the original motion, then we know we're on track. Let's scratch that, or should we do that, Mo? Just scratch the original motion, and then accept the, um, amendment?
Madam President, you have to rescind the motion, that's what you have to do.
Okay, so I rescind my, my original motion, that's what I'm looking for, Pastor Gilbert, the rescinding. So I rescind the original, I rescind the original motion, um, which was to take a deeper dive into the contract, and to go with a one-year contract. So I'm rescinding it. So do I got support to rescind it? So the motion has been rescinded and supported to be rescinded. Now, I would like support for the, uh, amendment, which was to table this until Sharice, uh, looks further into it, and we voted on it, and it was accepted. So are we good at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
You just got to have the support for your amendment.
Support.
Okay, and we did. Okay, thank you.
And see, I think, if I may, I think what needs to happen, we need to start to be a little bit more procedural. What we do, at least it's what I notice, is we discuss things before we make motions, and that's where we get over in the weeds.
And we get tangled up, yeah.
You have to do it procedurally correct, that helps Sister Monica to keep her records and her minutes correct, and then that can kind of make things kind of flow real easy, and, uh, so that, that would help us in the future, and I know it, it takes time to get there, but we got to work at it.
I'm halfway sleepy, so I don't know if I done made a motion, if I didn't discuss it, so y'all got to help me, because, oh, Lord, I'm tired, okay. Next, uh, we have act, no, we don't, we have informational reports, board members in your packet are monthly informational reports from VERTEC. One of them is, action item is a, uh, is an informational report, 22.2, from August 20th, 21, on page 101, and the other is 22.3, from September 20th, 21, on page 102. Uh, I'll give you a chance to get there, and then I'm asking, do you have any questions?
So the email that you sent, Mr. Jones, today, that was the goal for next month, so that's like the wireless access point, so that's good? Yes, sir. Cool. We're good to go.
Oh, okay.
We're good to go.
Okay, awesome. Next, uh, we have the academic committee of the whole, I will now call upon Ms. Murphy to present the academic committee of the whole, action items to the board. Hi, Ms. Murphy. How are you tonight?
Almost good morning.
Thank you. I seek a motion and a second to move action item 25.12, authorization to purchase approved items from the EDP career planning grant to the regular meeting on October 20th, 2021 for adoption.
So move.
Okay, um, we didn't get a second, um, and I...
I heard, I said so move, nobody seconded it.
Um, I think we also had a discussion, because some of the, are these things time-sensitive, Ms. Murphy? Any of them? Oh.
I'll second it.
Okay, second, uh, now we're going to have discussion. Is any of these things time-sensitive, Ms. Murphy?
So, anything in this particular action item that we're discussing now, or any of the action items that we have on the agenda?
The action items on the agenda, because here's our situation, we have quite a few things, and we have two new members, and they have not had the chance to properly vet them.
We have not done our due diligence. We will vet when she comes up here.
Okay, well, his due diligence, they have had a chance to smoke it over there.
Okay.
So, um, I was wondering if any of these things are time-sensitive, because I was going to make the request or the motion to table these things, to give our new members an opportunity to get up to speed, and be informed when they make their votes.
So, some of these grants, the end of their fiscal year, they went through September 30th, so the new allocations start in October, and so these are the new grants for FY22. And so these are the new grants for FY '22. Um, so some of them are time-sensitive. The ESER 2 grant, um, is somewhat time-sensitive only because of the work that the board would like to do around Door Rider. That was presented this evening around the, um, I'm sorry, I'm losing my words at this late hour, um, around the reconfigurations. So the funds for that work is included in this ESER 2 grant here this evening. So, I mean, it's...
Outside of that?
Nothing is, nothing is on fire. I guess you would say this is things that we have to bring annually, so.
What's the deadline for ESER 2?
Deadlines for...
You said something about ESER 2? Yes.
So we were just released our additional 24 million because initially when this grant came to you all, it was at 19 million.
Right.
So we have until 2024 and that includes with the tidings period to expend these funds.
And these are reimbursable dollars, right? I know I always ask that. When you say released, it's still at the treasury. We don't have them in our coffers. We have to go after them in order for us to be reimbursed, right?
Correct. So it wasn't, we weren't even able to complete the application for them that way. So now that they've released us to be able to insert the application, we went and budgeted the remaining funds.
That's for the work at Door Rider and the ESER funds?
A part of that work and the roof work, um, at the other buildings, if we want to consider that work and begin to move forward with that, those projects are outlined in the, uh, ESER 2 budget.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna, go ahead, Dr. Joyce.
So my understanding is that we're going to move this? Are you trying to move it?
Um, what we're trying to figure out is if Ms. Kiana has any time-sensitive items because we don't want to table something that needs us to, needs to be looked at today. We don't want to slow the district down, um, tabling something.
I will say the consolidated application, which is our Title I grant, um, that, you know, we, we, we're in our, um, third month of school. So we need to make those funds available for reimbursement for the district because we've been paying staff. Um, and we do have a July 1st obligation date, meaning that any funds that are contained in this grant, we can go back to July 1st to pay that. But in order to, um, access those funds, we have to approve the grant, so.
Okay, so can we get you to how many time-sensitive items we have? Can we move them to the front and table the things that are not time-sensitive maybe?
Can I ask some clarity?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Let me ask some clarity for you, Kiana. When, I think what Board President's saying in my conversation here with her is they need a week to mull this over. So it has to go to the board meeting next week. So if we, if we push a, a cow before the board meeting?
Would that be too late?
With these items?
No, because we have to wait that time anyway.
Right. So we have to wait till next week anyway for your approval.
Right, because this is, okay, so can we, so, go ahead, Ms. Dr. McNeil.
Uh, just a point of information. I guess my concern is that, uh, when you're looking at all this financial data, we just are trying to get our consultant in
Yeah.
Uh, to advise us. Uh, I'm not comfortable making any decision until we get that a consultant in because we've been behind so far in getting information. So, um...
We, I think we approved him.
So are we talking about these grants?
Yeah, but she won't be approved until you moved her to the board meeting.
Oh, we moved Carrie too?
No, you, you approved it to go to the board.
Right, right, right.
Yes, we approved her for the 20th.
At the board meeting.
Okay, okay. I don't even know what y'all talking about no more, but okay.
But, but I think Ms. McNeil brings up a great point. Sorry. I think, uh, Trustee McNeil brings up a great point as it relates to the overall ESER dollars, right? We, in community, everyone sees the hundred and however many we got that's coming. There hasn't been a broad conversation between us and community about how the community want to see us allocate those dollars. So I think that's the bigger discussion that we need to have before we, you know, move down the road. Just wanted to mention that for the record.
And I do want to share, we have a survey out for our parents now and I've been going over the survey data. I went over with the principals yesterday. I went over with the family engagement facilitators today. So we put that out for our parents to start garnering that feedback.
And I think that's great, but I think also like a town hall or something like that.
Well, let me say that, let me, excuse me, Mr. Walker, let me fill this in. With you being the new, uh, assistant slash treasurer slash, then that would be on you to put that together. So you might want to start working on that. That's your stuff, baby, honey.
You got it, you got it. Yes, ma'am.
Madam President, I would like to ask, uh, Ms. Murphy, she's the, uh, interim assistant superintendent.
Yes, sir.
Well, I got a problem and I just got to get. When you say time-sensitive, so what has been the past that you have brought forth these time-sensitive things before the board? And you know that you already have a deadline on time-sensitive. What, what is the scope? I mean, how many days do you need? Because thi- this is critical. I, I don't think we can continue to do this because you're saying it's time-sensitive. And whenever you use those words when we're talking about federal, state dollars or household dollars or whatever you're talking about, it, it's crunch time now. But being a new member myself and, and Brother Chris, uh, we're both very detailed people. We like, we love to read, study. That's, that's what I do. That's my gift. So I don't know. I, I just don't know. That's it. And if you bring it in here and you bring it before the board and it's time-sensitive, if you wait and give it to Sister Monica and she has to prepare it for us and we got this and we trying to look over it and she's giving us a crash course and that was on Monday, today is Wednesday, that's just unacceptable for Brother Gilbert. I, 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 you, do you follow what I'm saying?
Sure. I didn't use that term, time-sensitive. That was the question that President McIntosh asked me. So I said, we don't have anything on fire. This is our annual way to bring grants forward. So that wasn't my statement. That, that we have, this is our normal way of how we process grants, so.
Okay, well, I'd like to follow up then. So what is your view on your side of how you bring that before the board? Because even though, uh, Madam President used that, we're, if we're going to do better and make every dollar count and make every dollar go toward, uh, the district and go toward the children, we've got to change some things here. And you, you're part of that. You're not excluded, you're included. So, and when you say she brought that up, that's what we supposed to do. We supposed to iron it out, clear it out, get to the part that's really critical. And that is, if it's ti, if it's a deadline somewhere and you know what it is and she has an idea what it is and I don't know what it is, then how do we fix that?
So, uh, if I may, uh, this is at least the second item today that's been brought to us. The first one's with the people working in the district without a contract. And here we're asked to approve money for something that started in, I heard, September and then in July. Why are these things coming to us so late, so after the fact? It seems like if, if a contract's expiring in July or is going to be enforced in September, I'd like to see that a, a month or two months ahead of time. We know this comes up, what, every year, I think you just alluded to? So can somehow it happen that we get these things earlier so we can review it, have some discussion, ask some questions and then be timely so we don't have people in the district working without a contract? So we don't miss a deadline? Uh, is that something that can happen?
Absolutely. Just for a point of clarity with the consolidated application, which is the document that I mentioned that has the July 1 obligation date, that's our federal funds through the Michigan Department of Education. This particular school year, they transitioned us to a new information system. And so they delayed our being able to input the grants into the electronic system.
Okay.
We received a memo last week that the system that we have been waiting for is not going live. So we still don't have access to what they call NEXIS, the new system. But we started working with building these grants in the spring of last year because these are site-based school budgets and the principals and their leadership teams and the stakeholders at those schools have to work together to build them. So because the state, in my opinion, has kind of kicked the can down the road with the information system, I didn't want to continue to wait for that to open. That's why we have the budgets coming to you individually in Excel documents because we had prepared with principals in the spring of the year. So because as a district, we were between a rock and a hard place, waiting for MDE, waiting for MDE to make the system available. We still yet don't even have that system open, but I didn't want to delay continuing to bring this to you all, waiting for MDE. So that's, that's the explanation for that. But we start preparing early in the year. Principals receive their carryover amounts in Januaries. So there is a budget cycle that we have that goes with a lot of intentionality before you guys receive the budget. So that's, so to your point, it's very well taken, but we were kind of subject to MDE.
And I also want to add, and I also want to add this for our new members, Ms. Kiana is backfilling in Mr. Kevlin's job while he backfills in the superintendent's job. So she has double her roles as usual. She's doing the assistant superintendent's job plus her regular job, which is over the grants for academics. And I will say this, out of everybody in the district, Ms. Kiana is usually on time and professional and have all her information and out of everybody, and I'm not just saying this, but out of everybody in the district that we work on, work with that brings us information, she is usually 98% of the time on point. So I did want to share that with our new members because I know it is daunting to get this late, but usually she is more professional.
And it's, and it's a lot of work.
It is.
I mean, I've been working on all of these, so, so I, I get it.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't pointing out any fault towards you.
No, no, I just want to under, wanted you guys to understand why she may be even a little slower than usual with the obstacles that she faced due to the state and with her additional workload. That's, that's, I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, and I have a much better understanding of what went on with the pandemic in the state and the computer system.
Yep, that one particular grant, that system is yet to open, so.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
I, I just want to point a clarification. The consolidated app has, has to be approved by the, the state.
That is correct.
And after it's approved by the state, we bring it forth to the board.
Right.
And so until it's improved, until it's approved by the state, it can't be brought to you. So when it's approved by the state, that's when we bring the app forward to the board. So if they don't approve it before school begins, we can't bring it to you. So we have to bring the app to you, the consolidated app, after the state has stated to us, we approve the budgets from your schools. So then we bring it to the board for your approval. So that's why you, you probably will never get that at, before school starts in August. That, that probably will never happen. I, it hasn't happened since I've been here.
And we always submit by June 30th. That's, we always submit by June 30th, but we're waiting for MDE to review it. And because their system, NEXIS, is not even up, I sent my budgets to our new consultant and said, I'm on a balanced calendar, I need you to look at my budgets because I can't be constrained by your system not being open, so.
So I, I, and I think that speaks to Pastor when, when Pastor is stating, why are we getting this now? And it, you know, it's time, time crunch. We, we only can give it to you after they approve it, Pastor. So I just want to make sure you...
And the state is super slow due to COVID. Everybody using that. Everybody who ain't on time, they, they using COVID.
I think one year, I think either last year or the year before, we didn't get approved to November or, and so we couldn't bring the app. We have people working, we have contracts out and we couldn't pay those folks until after it was approved by the state, so.
Okay, so now that we're back, and of course, I don't know where we're at, but I think we were about to table this till November 17th, which is our next, is it November 17th?
Next week, right?
No, 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 no. Next, next week. Yeah, I'm like, wait a minute.
Yes.
Oh, Lord.
Wait, point of information, I thought we was gonna try to table this until we get our financial consultant in place to give us some type of guidance and information where we should stand financially.
Yes, that was the...
That's what I was looking for. Am I missing something?
I don't know. At this point, I don't know where we were at. I'm not going to pretend like I know I have completely lost.
I don't, I understand.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I want permission before I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so Board Member McNeil did ask for that. And so the question becomes, because we had to wait on the state, right? And now we're bringing this to the board, November 17th. Can, is there anything that's going to put us in a bind with general fund or any of our contracts that we are going to need to ask the board to bring forward for some type of approval or discussion?
Before November?
No, next, I thought it was next.
Or October or next week?
No, listen, you can't approve the Sukelski until next week unless you decide to do something different. So Sukelski is just moved to next week. I hope I'm not talking out of line here.
We can approve Sukelski tonight if we want to, Karen.
Yeah, we can approve Sukelski right now if we like.
We, even though that, we could just change the date on the, um...
Yeah, we can change that.
We got September 20th, we can just change the date. Because a point, this is where I'm at, of this board. Ever since I've been here, we've been working in the dark, trying to figure out where we at. To this day, we don't actually know as a board where we at. We just trying to hurry up and get stuff done because when you come, we have to have it, we have to have it. And we have made, we, it's, the buck have to stop now. Uh, we need Sukelski on board.
Yeah, we can, and we can move that.
Yeah, and we should get that done so we don't hold up anything, give her time to look at things. So if we can go back and look at that, because...
Okay, the mo, okay, so at this, at this time, I'm hearing, I like to, at this time, I move that we approve Ms. Carrie Sukelski for immediate work, the CFO, who will be covering for Ms. I'm praying her absence.
Support.
It has been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion? There you go, Mr. Chris.
Yes, so we talked about things being time-sensitive and approving it at a future date. It sounds like there's at least one item that's been approved by the state. I don't know if we can, has anything been approved by the state yet?
So what the guidance that they gave us regarding the consolidated application because their system wasn't open, and so I sent, I preemptively sent my budgets to our consultant and she approved them, but they're not in the system, um, because the system doesn't, is not open yet. So the state has approved our consolidated application, which is all of our Title I grants, Title II, and Title IV.
Okay. And out of that, is there anything that we can change?
Not until carryover.
Okay, so if there's nothing we can change, can we approve that tonight, that portion?
Ms. Carrie Sukelski, that portion just been voted on and it has been moved and properly seconded.
Okay.
About, we have Mr. Walker with some discussion.
Just a quick question. So, uh, with this moving forward, if it passes, is Ms. Sukelski ready to walk in tomorrow or what is her, again, we say immediate, but what is immediate?
Um, I have not spoken with Ms. Sukelski, but to my understanding, Ms. Sukelski has been waiting on us to start this work.
Okay.
So, Madam President, will, will Ms...
Sukelski?
Sukelski.
Yeah, thank you. Will she, can we, will she be here next week?
Um, she probably will, well, she was always here when she was here. She's very professional and she'll be more than willing to speak with you and come before the board.
Madam President?
If you'd like, I hadn't talked to her, so I don't know if she'll be here. I didn't ask her.
I, I just want to know, will she be here?
I don't know, Mr. Gilbert. Pastor Gilbert, I got to ask.
Can we communicate with her that the board is requesting that she be here?
No, I can't make a request to see if she'll be here and I'll let you know what she says.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board President?
Yes, ma'am.
The consolidated app, that, those, those title funds that's being, I just want to bring some clarity. The schools, uh, have right to determine, uh, from the government what they're going The schools, uh, have right to determine, uh, from the government what they're going to spend those funds on. And once those funds are approved by the state, that is what they must spend those funds on. So what Ms. Sukelski will probably do with that is just make sure that they're spending those funds properly. And that's what, that's what, um, Ms. Kiana does normally. So that's what she would do with the consolidated application, is make sure the funds are spent right. Now the ESER, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing.
And one thing about it, once Ms. Sukelski shows up, she's brilliant. It won't take her long to bust it down, okay? You'll get that, that information. She, I love her, she on play. Is there any other discussion? Seeing there is none, the motion was made to bring Ms. Sukelski in ASAP if it's voted on and approved. Um, next, we are talking about our grants. Do we, is it, is it, is it?
Did we vote?
Yeah.
I thought we voted. We didn't vote. Okay, I'm sorry, y'all. Okay, at this time, I'm taking a roll call vote in. Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. McGinn?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Pastor Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? And it's a yes for myself. Motion passes six yes and Ms. Green's absent. Uh, moving forward, our next state of business is, are we going to determine to table our grants and give Ms., because Ms. Kiana, at this point, since we separated Ms. Sukelski, we can table the rest of this? Is it safe?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what Ms. Sukelski's role is, if it's just you all want me to forward these grants to her. So I guess I, I just need to know what you all want from me to make sure.
I'm asking if we, if we table our grants to give them that opportunity that we spoke about till next week.
Okay.
Would that delay your work, frustrate your work, slow down your work?
No, ma'am. No, we, we have to wait till next week anyway.
Right. So at this point, um, if it is the board's pleasure, I am asking, I am asking that we move to table the grant portions so that our new members can get caught up to speed, ask some questions or whatever it is that they need to do, to do their due diligence.
So are you talking about 21 and 22?
I'm talking about the rest of Ms., uh, Kiana's packet.
25, 25, 45.
As a matter of fact, let me turn, 20, I'm talking about action item 25, point everything.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. I did, and we're in discussion.
To table it, right?
Okay. So at this time, I will take a roll call vote on this because we didn't roll call vote this yet, right? Okay. Ms. Laura?
So we're, we're voting to table it till next week?
Till next week. And we're gonna have, we're gonna handle this portion before our scheduled meeting next week. We'll go over this and then we'll roll right into our special meeting.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Joyce Ellis-McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Delmarone?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor Allen Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
And myself, it is a yes. So, uh, the motion passes six yes and one absent. We will table the rest of our packet to get our, um, other new board members up to speed. And at this time, let me make sure our meeting is adjourned.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam President, could I, Ms. Murphy, thank you so much. Thank you for being, for.
Thank you. Thank you for your five-hour wait to present, yeah, thank you.
Before we adjourn, do any board members have, have any remarks? Mr. Delmarone?
I do, thank you. Uh, yeah, let me say, uh, it's, it's an honor to, to be on the board here to try and, uh, help the students. Uh, to me, that's what it's about. They come first, safety comes first, the students come first, either way. Um, the, some members of the public, since I've been on already, they want me to ask a couple of questions. And one is on Washington School, I guess there, there was the fire there. Uh, what's going to be done with that, uh, if there's any timeframe, anything like that? And the second one is in regards to Nethercutt School. In its parking lot, uh, there's, uh.
There'd be cones?
Cones, there are barrels out there. One barrel I saw was halfway in, in the, below the parking lot, the pavement.
I, I, when, as it pertains to Washington School, uh, we found out through our insurance company that, that it's not covered to, uh, be demoed, uh, by the insurance company. So the board would have to, uh, discuss and make motion for, uh, well, we'll have to bring it to the board to determine to demo. I did receive a phone call from a council member, um, asking about that, that's in her ward. Uh, and so I did let her know that that is something that I will have to get back with her on after the board has conversation on that. And I wanted to speak to Board President in our 101, uh, so that we can bring that to the board to discuss.
The, there might be an opportunity for some funds, I don't know, but Brown Funeral Home in that same area, uh, was torn down and they received, I believe, some federal government money to tear that down. It might have gone through the land bank, I'm not sure exactly, but I know there was money available for that Brown Funeral Home, which is maybe a, a stone throw away from, uh, the school there. And then, again, the other one, the other question was on Nethercutt.
So, um, we, we can move faster if, if, if it's the board's desire to deal with the Nethercutt situation. It is in the renovation process for us to deal with parking lots. Uh, but parking lots will, will not be covered under ESER funds. That will be a general fund expense. Now, there's more to that. As we roll over payroll into, uh, the ESER funds, that frees up some funds for us to do some of the work as it pertains to the parking lots for the school district and some other things that are on the table. So it, it's a matter of, uh, determining what's first. And so that goes back to Board Member McNeil and talking about the Advisory Committee, the ad hoc, so that we can get our community involved in this conversation, which we have some documentation for you that you will receive by the end of this week to determine that.
And point of information, um, um, Madam President and the board, we was work, we had worked with attorneys about, we, we got some property that we're working with that we need to sell, we know we need to do something with them. However, we have to look at the Plant Moran Crescent report, we did the feasibility of our schools. And before we can start talking about demolition or doing anything, we have to get an understanding and hope Sukelski can come in or come before the board. So there, there's plan for the schools, and there's a lot of thing happening. But keep in mind, and I'm gonna say this, these schools been in this district for years. Nobody started burning down schools until that became an issue with some issues with other people. African-American, uh, families, uh, men are not around there burning up our schools. Come on, let's, let's be for real. They just not, if they was gonna put them, uh, put the fire to the school, they would have did it years ago. So we're not gonna panic because somebody's burning up our schools and we know who they are. And no insurance company that I know of insure abandoned buildings. They, I think our policies are, huh, millions of dollars? And, and, you know, that's gonna be an expense to insure, to insure an abandoned building. Uh, it's a process that we got to get through, we got to know where we at. And that's what the problem we have now, we just don't know right now. We got to look at that Plant Moran Crescent report, see where we at, what school. Uh, we know that, that, uh, that parking lot, I don't think it'd hurt that much to have somebody come over there because I, Nethercutt is right behind my house and you can pop a tire. Uh, if you could go through there at night, your whole back of your car can almost fall in that hole. So that can be done, but, um, as a whole, we hear what they're saying about the school is already in the making, but we have so much distraction here that we got to find out where we at financially. You cannot go to the bank and draw money out the bank and don't know what you got. So, um, to that, we just got to get it down to the pack and I, if you guys get that report from, uh, Mo, Kevin Warner sent in an excellent present, uh, PowerPoint presentation explaining ESER fund. In that PowerPoint presentation, Ba, B-A-I-R-D, did a report for us to see where we at financially. If we could get that understood and then tell us where we're supposed to be at with our ESER funds. So if we can get our new members up to par, where Adrian and I've been trying and the board been trying to get for a while, uh, you'll see where we at and where we at, but you need to see that report that came back from the Treasury. You remember that report? It's a PowerPoint, excellent information in it. I took my time and just read and I go, oh my God, I see why he's not coming. He's giving us everything we need. We just got to read it, get an understanding and understand what renovation meant is relates to COVID. Um, that's all I pretty much got to say about that. It's late and I forgot my thoughts.
I'll, I'll be real quick, Mr. Jones, I just got two quick questions. The first one is about, uh, I know count day, I don't know if it's still going on, but I know it happened. I just wanted to know when we'll get the numbers because expenditures are already set, but we'll have to readjust as it relates to our revenue. So just wondering from the budget process, because this is my first time going through this, as being on a board.
So, uh, the 11th day after.
The 11th day, which is.
After, uh, I think it's, well, count day was last Wednesday, so it's going to be next Thursday.
Okay, okay.
Uh, that we will be able to, uh, solidify.
For our November board meeting.
Right, so scholars have 10 days to show up.
Okay.
So scholars that wasn't there, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Scholars that weren't, was not there on count day.
Yeah.
Have 10 days to show up. So what's happening right now is attendance agents, uh, principals are making sure those scholars are called and found.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Ms. Sains, which is, uh, one of our data, uh, folks, she's sending that information every day to principals.
Yeah.
And at the same time, HR is leveling, meaning, uh, leveling teachers to the number of scholars in the classroom.
Okay.
To ensure that we are accounting for those, the amount of scholars we're, we're gonna end up with. So the 11th day.
Yeah.
I should be able to get a report and send to all of you that report.
Okay, and then I don't know if this is gonna happen at our next board meeting or maybe our November board meeting, but I've also been thinking about the president's mandate as it relates to the vaccine and for employers of 100 or more, and I believe that's us, and what that will mean for our, uh, our workforce, uh, within our school district. So just would love a COVID-19 update, uh, from that lens.
Absolutely.
I didn't, um, Mr. Jones, um, since we just, could we make sure that Mo gets all emails and information, uh, so that it'll help us when we're calling her?
We talked about that.
Oh, yeah. So she said we talked about it because it'd make it easier when we calling and looking for information. And also, let's keep in mind that, um, Dan Kildey uncle passed today, Dale Kildey, and so let's keep him in our prayers. Uh, the event is canceled for Friday that they was gonna give, uh, at the hotel over there, but, uh, Dale Kildey passed today.
And he was a teacher in our district.
Huh?
He was a teacher in our district.
Yeah.
Okay, and I also, is there any other board members that would like to make comments? Okay, I would also like to, um, I, this crossed my mind when Johnson Controls was up there.
We can't hear you.
It crossed, this crossed my mind when Johnson Controls was up there, showing their, um, presentation on what they're working on. I really think, other than, um, Doyle Rider and maybe Nethercutt a school that we know we have good attendance, strong attendance in, I think we really need to look at our repairs because are we repairing buildings that we are gonna tear down or sell? Because once Plant Moran, um, Crescent or either Plant Moran, Plant Moran come back with their findings, if they say close this building, this building, and this building, you're spending money renovating buildings that may have to be closed. Um, that crossed my mind, but so much is going on and you take in so much information. I thought about that when he was sitting there. So I think it is imperative that we get our, and then the other portion, our Plant Moran information did come in and it was withheld from us.
Well, he hasn't, but here's the thing I have with that report, you need a micro, you need, I mean, you can't read it. Only way you can be able to read it, you have to be on your computer where you can just make, and you're gonna see what's in that report. And that's what I've been saying all along, you know, that, yeah, we have it, Mo printed it out for me, but when you print it, you can't, you, you can't, you can't even read it unless you're sitting on your computer and then you got to magnify it on your computer. We need a better print so we can read and be, know what we're reading, but it's almost like the design, who would print something that small? It's less than a three-point print.
So what we will do is, the informa, well.
And it's good information, but.
Well, no need even, it's outdated now, so we can't even, so, yeah, they gave the information to some people back in June and they didn't share it with us like they were supposed to. So Pers said, the Treasury, and this is what the Treasury said, the information has to be updated now and the information that was distributed, that was kept from us at the time is no longer good. But because they just.
Obsolete.
But because they just gave, because they just gave us this information, they said they gave us this information back in June. Now, if it is a story, the Treasury told it and Ms. Charisse was a witness to hear that. So they told us, because we were excited to hear that they had it, and she says, no, no, you can't use it now though because it's outdated. You have to have updated information when you do this. And so now, and I told her, I said, well, it wasn't that long ago, so you should be able to make the adjustment, because I think the adjustment is simply a matter of knowing what the enrollment is. And then they re-tweak their formulas. So it should be an easy fix, but no need to concentrate on that information because it is no longer accurate. So I just wanted to put that out.
Easy fix at no cost?
I don't know about no cost, no, I don't, I don't know that it's no cost. Well, Plant Moran, we were, we, I think we had a grant for that piece of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, a reimbursement plan, so I don't know if the update is gonna be reimbursed and maybe I better have Charisse look into that. But that is, that is what's holding us up severely is this Plant Moran piece. And that piece was intentionally kept from us.
That's crazy.
Okay, so that delays our work, okay? And people that we asked for over and over again in these meetings, Treasury said, they gave them that paperwork, that, those documents. And so the board never got them and we were asking like every board meeting. We've been waiting on this stuff for a long time. So I just wanted to inform the board on that. And Mr. Kevlin didn't have it. So, yeah, we, well, we know what happened with it. So the long, long story short is, as, as it pertains to our renovations, I would think it would behoove us to wait on the Plant, uh, Moran piece and then determine what, what buildings we will, we will repair because we're wasting money. If Plant Moran comes back and says, close this building and you've added air conditioning, fix this, fix the roof, fix that. So I think even with the repairs, and, um, like the piece that Chris spoke to him about and he was like, oh, well, we can go through it and get it and we can do this many buildings. We, we can't really do that now because we don't want to waste our money like that, not even our ESER funds, no money, no grant dollars or anything. So we have to be mindful of that.